Change, is that in process?
Working on that.
Okay, we'll assume that that'll catch up to us.
Sorry, I figured out how to do it the other day and now I'm not seeing it.
It's in the upper right corner, the three dots, if you click on that of your screen.
Yeah, but it's not.
Under participant list.
You're okay, you're okay. So let's, I will, council.
Yeah.
Well, mine's not fixed either.
I call this meeting to order of the City Council for the City of Gross Point Park. Clerk Playhut, please call the roll.
Councilmember Rayland.
Present.
Reed.
Here.
Robson.
Here.
Hedges.
President.
Fluet.
Here.
And Mayor Denner.
Here. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic, the republic of which it stands.
One nation, under God.
Under God.
Thank you. The first item of business is the approval of the consent agenda. The consent agenda this month has the September 28th meeting minutes. A finance report and a MERS resolution related to our retirement system, just informing MERS of actions that have already been taken. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move.
I'll support.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
There's one hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed your hand. I'm sorry, Councilmember Fluet.
I had one finance question and then I had a couple of things in the minutes. My finance question was just the very last item. The truck and trailer. Educate me about why we needed to buy an engine for a rubbish truck when we're paying for another company to pick up our rubbish?
That would be for leaf pickup. So we do have leaves that actually go in that rubbish truck and other special pickup that needs to be done. You know, so that's why we need to fix and have that new engine.
Okay, thank you. And then in the minutes, I had on page five, the third paragraph of unfinished business. Councilmember Fluet asked for an update regarding the meetings. I would like to change that to a monthly update. Either monthly update or updates after each meeting, whichever one would be applicable.
Okay, why don't we say monthly?
Okay.
Anything else?
On page 11. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I have one more.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, I have one more and then I'm done. At the bottom of page 11, discussion of Tifa board appointments. I would like to add that Councilmember Fluet asked or requested that because so many Tifa members' terms had expired, Tifa make no major decisions slash expenditures until new members are seated in January. And that's all I have.
Okay.
Well, I guess there's a point of review. Are you saying Councilmember Fluet? That was a statement you made at the council meeting?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. All right. Anything else before we call it? So with those two changes to the minutes, does the mover and secondor support those changes?
Yes.
Who supported the approval of the minutes?
Member Robson, I believe.
Mr. Robson.
Do you support those changes?
I do.
Okay. With those changes, please call the roll.
Councilmember Rayland.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Robson.
Yes.
Hedges.
Yes.
Fluet.
Yes.
And Mayor Denner.
Yes. Next item of business is the approval of the regular agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move.
I'll second.
Then we have a second. Is there a discussion? I have one bit of discussion before we move on. I understand that Congresswoman Brenda Lawrence is unable to join us this evening. And so that agenda item will be taken off with the approval of council. It's not going to happen at any rate because she's unable to join us. And I saw a hand up with Councilmember Reed.
Yes, and I'm, I'm going to defer my comments to after the city manager's report, but I'm going to be asking for some clarification on the council rules on agenda setting. So I'll discuss that after the city manager's report and I was going to defer to the Congresswoman, but after public comment.
Sure, that, that probably fits best in unfinished business. Okay. With that, with those changes, we have motion on the floor to approve the regular agenda. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Rayland.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Robson.
Yes.
Hedges.
Yes.
Fluet.
Yes.
And Mayor Denner.
Yes. Motion, motion passes. And the earlier motion to follow up to approve the consent agenda also passed. So we'll make that official. We now move on to a public comment for agenda items and I'll ask the administration to read any written comment and manage the verbal comment from the public.
Thank you, Mayor Denner. So council, I have one public comment tonight in writing. This comment comes from NIM Pharma of Balfour. Good evening, councilmembers. I am submitting another request that the repeated recommendations to reopen safety barriers be denied. I would also like to ask that councilmembers also consider supporting and voting for school board candidates Ahmed Ismail, Lauren Nowicki, Cindy Pangborn, Lisa Papas, and John Steininger. I'd also like to compliment Chief Pallone and our Public Safety Department for being one of the best trained departments. Make GPP and GPPSS great again. That's what I have for public comment. Now I will ask if there's any public comment. Leah is going to share a three-minute timer on the screen for everybody. And as soon as she says for you to go ahead, please do so. So with that said, Leah, do we have any public comment in the queue?
Thank you, City Manager Seisland. Yes, I currently have two people in the queue. So the first person I have in the queue is phone number ending in four, five, one, six. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself. And please state your full name and city residency for the record. Go ahead, please.
Hi there, my name is Martin Steiger. I'm a park resident. I'm calling in to express my disappointment with two of the three nominations for the new ethics review board. While they have impressive resumes and they obviously have a desire to serve the community, which I applaud, neither Mr. Breen nor, and I hope I'm not butchering his name here, but Mr. Pajinski, Mr. Pajinski, neither one expressed any actual interest in ethics on their applications. Neither one even used the word ethics or ethical or anything related to ethics on their applications. In fact, just by reading their applications, it was impossible to determine which commission or board they were even applying for without looking at which boxes they had checked on the first page. I strongly believe that the individuals selected for this board should place a high value on ethics, and that did not come across in either of their applications. I know that there were several residents, myself included, who applied for a spot on the board who did mention ethics and the importance of ethics in their applications and who did explain why they wanted to serve specifically on the ethics board. And I believe that they would be much better suited for the positions. I'm also disappointed that all the individuals the mayor nominated are men of a, let's say, a certain age. There are younger members of this community and female members of this community who would like to serve and it would be nice to see some diversity on this new board. Furthermore, this board will be reviewing ethics complaints about city officials and will be acting like a pseudo jury, in a sense, that is, reviewing the ethics complaint, the facts, and the ethics ordinance, and then drawing a conclusion and making a recommendation to council. I would therefore hope that the members of the board would be more reflective of the makeup of our community, like a jury or a city review board should be. I would also like to note that I applaud the nomination of Lawrence Mann to the ethics board. He was one of my professors during my first year of law school nineteen years ago, and I was happy to see that he addressed the importance of ethics on his application. I'm confident that he will do an excellent job if he is confirmed. Thank you.
Thank you. Leah, next public comment?
Okay. Mary, you are going to be next. I'm going to ask you to please state your full name and city residency for the record. Go ahead, please.
Thanks, Leah. Mary Rulo, Gross Point Park. Tonight, I'm offering these comments with regard to the mayor's choice of four men to fill positions on the planning and ethics commissions, leaving better qualified women on the bench. In addition to highlighting the qualification of these women applicants, I hope the council will examine and discuss what is going on here with regard to gender. From where I sit, this is somewhere along a continuum, bookended by the old boys' network and sexism. Whatever it is, it is unacceptable. To be sure, the city has a poor track record of welcoming the expertise that exists in this community in both men and women. To raise due diligence, community engagement, and policy questions is to all but guarantee that you will not find yourself in a voting role if the mayor has his way. Here's my experience. I first met Mayor Denner early last summer at a public hearing by the Planning Commission on the draft master plan. I had a good back and forth with the mayor and the other commissioners. As the hearing came to an end, the mayor encouraged me to think about applying for the Tifa. I live in the Tifa district and have experience to represent Tifa residents whose interests are often overlooked. I started tuning into city hall issues and became involved with the election last fall. I also followed the Tifa closely and began speaking out at Tifa and council meetings about the lack of legal compliance and transparency, among other issues. I did apply for the Tifa board about a year ago, and to the best of my knowledge, my application has never been advanced by the mayor. But hope springs eternal as the terms of five current members expire in January. Our council, our boards and commissions, and our employee base should all reflect the demographics of the park. They do not. I'd also like to address a point made by Councilman Robson at the last meeting to the effect that the mayor's proposed appointments were entitled to something akin to a presumption of approval because he was the mayor and should be allowed to populate the commissions to his liking. Respectfully, Mr. Robson is wrong. The park is a council-manager system of government, and our charter says that the mayor, and I'm quoting here, shall have a voice and vote in all proceedings of the council, equal with that of other members of the council, but shall have no veto power, close quote. The park is not a strong mayor jurisdiction where the mayor serves as the CEO of the community and where appointments may be closer to picking a cabinet. Further, in resubmitting Mr. Saros for the Planning Commission, I'd argue that the mayor is de facto vetoing last month's council vote, violating at least the spirit of the charter. Thank you.
Thank you. Leah, do we have any more public comment?
I have no further public comment at this time, Manager Seisland.
Thank you. Mayor?
Okay, thank you. That closes public comment, and we'll move on to the next item of business, the manager's report. City Manager Seisland?
Okay, thank you, Mayor Denner. So council before you tonight is my manager report. First topic is our 2020 road program. Cadillac asphalt is in town completing the following road work. We're working with our engineers already to identify road priorities for next paving season, including those that really need to be looked at at the city hall parking lot in Patterson. Those streets that are currently finished are Yorkshire thirteen to fourteen hundred, Bedford thirteen to fourteen hundred, Charlevoix three mile to Whittier, St. Paul from Balfour to Cadieux, the alley between Cadieux to Harvard on Mac and on South Jefferson Bishop Road. And left is on Essex, Barrington to Westchester. The city planning commission selected MKSK to complete the city master plan. Since that time, administration has met with MKSK to discuss beginning steps and services that could be a part of their work. Additional services that are separate but could be included is a parking study and a recreation master plan. First meetings for master plan, I imagine, will begin in December and or early January for the public. For the social district, temporary signs have been placed on Churchill and Charlevoix. At this time, there are four restaurants part of the social district. Those are the Bricks, Red Crown, O'Flarides, and Rustic Cabins. For the Tifa COVID support program, at this time, twenty-two thousand thirty-three dollars have been awarded. The city is continuing to reaching out to those businesses and applying for the program. And the Tifa will hold its next meeting as an informational on November twenty-third at seven PM. DDA COVID support business program, at this time, three thousand dollars have been awarded in the DDA program. Water service line verification, apartment and public works is setting up appointments for the water material verification project. This is required to verify water line material because of state of Michigan law. At this time, right now, we're still working on Zone Five, which is addresses between Windmill Point and Jefferson, between Berkshire and Cadieux. And appointments are being set, and those who missed one, one through four, we're still working on those. DT is still in town with Infra Source crews. They're on the north side of Jefferson installing main and services. For any restoration concerns, please have residents call DT at three-one-three-two-seven-zero-nine-two-four-zero. And certainly, if no response or satisfaction received, please contact my office and/or Pat Thomas, which would be citymanager@grosspointpark.org, or thomasp@grosspointpark.org. The city, as of October twenty-seventh, has had one hundred seventy-three cases of the coronavirus, which is about forty since last month. Public Works Building, the Tifa at its last meeting approved a demo bid for fourteen-eighty Wayburn in the form of her dunks. Building anticipated demolition to be within the next two, three weeks. And the architect currently is awaiting cost estimates from its general contractors that went up for bid. City Hall Building, Spicer Group wrapping up final cost estimates of the building and scheduling by priority. Renovation to start at Public Safety Building and work its way to the link in City Hall. Roof and windows to be the start of the project. Donation gift policy development, the city is in development of a donation gifts policy for city council consideration. Discussing best prac- Sorry about that. Discussing best practices and gathering thoughts from donors and meet with the foundation. Purpose of this policy is to establish a process for acceptance and documentation of donation gifts made to the city, including installation, long-term maintenance, operation of donated elements to the city, which is determined by the city council and our city manager. The policy will provide guidance from individuals, community groups, and businesses wish to make those donations or gifts to the city. Urban renewal initiative foundation discussions, those have been taking place between myself and Scott Cave, who's the owner's rep for the URF. This was as part of a motion by the city council in August. Of those requests include a sunset on fundraising, fundraising, performing a traffic and parking study, employing green sustainability initiatives with this construction. At this time, the engineers are ready for the SCOP center compiling a review of their green, sustainable design practices and a parking design document. And awaiting, and at this time, I'm awaiting those documents since their last discussion and other considerations and negotiation at this time. Exciting news, Safe Ruts to School, the city in Gross Point Public School System turned in to the state. It's a Safe Ruts to Schools application, which was due on October fifteenth. Project total funding would be, if approved, four hundred thirty thousand, and we should know award by the late winter, early spring of twenty-twenty-one. Mayor Denner, those are my, this is my manager report.
Is there any questions for the city manager? On his report. Councilmember Hodges?
Thank you, Mayor Denner. Just to clarify, Mr. Seisland, of the total dollar amount consumed within the Tifa by businesses that was allotted for COVID relief, only twenty-two of the total of fifty K has been requested, correct, and applied for?
That is, that is correct, Councilmember Hodges.
So in both funds, both Tifa and DDA, there's still a sizable amount of money available for organizations and businesses that qualify?
Yeah, close to thirty thousand still available for Tifa support and about seven thousand for DDA.
Great. I also would like to commend you on a couple of fronts. One, I was proud as a park resident to read in the Gross Point News that social districts are being pioneered in Gross Point Park. So thank you for your leadership there. Also, the safe passage to schools on the first day back to school for fifth graders, I know, went well and parents were pleased with the presence on Jefferson there. So thank you for thinking ahead on that and making sure that safety was of paramount importance. And then also, my family and I had the pleasure of participating in the Halloween in the Park this past Saturday, and it was most enjoyable, meeting Thor, AKA Chad Craig, and the rest of the team, who were full of spirit. I also noticed a couple of doctors trying to bring a skeleton back to life. I think their last name was Relin. And there were plenty of adorable little ones, and I was a little embarrassed that my stash of candy seemed to keep running out, even though I swear I wasn't eating it. But thank you to Chad for keeping my tub full. So great job to the team for providing just a wonderful experience for our community.
Thank you, I'll be sure to convey that to Chad.
Fluet?
I have, thank you, I have a couple of things. First of all, I also wanted to mention that I believe posted on Facebook that, that they were really happy with the way Halloween in the Park was handled, so I wanted to mention that as well. It sounds like everything went very well. So I have two questions. One is about the, the Tifa fund and the DDA fund that we set aside, the grants that we set aside because of COVID. I know some businesses spent more than the thirty-five-hundred-dollar limit that they were allowed. Is there a way that we can allow a business who has already received a grant to come back for another amount of money since we funded fifty thousand and ten thousand respectively? Can those businesses who did outlay more than thirty-five-hundred dollars come back and get another grant?
That's certainly something we have considered, especially, you know, Councilmember Fluet, that we still have almost thirty thousand left in that COVID support. So that is something that definitely is in consideration and I would like to go forth with.
Okay.
And once that happens, I'll be happy to share those details.
Okay, thank you. And then my other question is about the meeting with the URIF. One of the things we had asked for was the sunset deadline on fundraising. And so you're saying that's still under consideration? We don't have an answer on that yet?
That's still being negotiated at this time with the urban renewal.
Okay. Do you have any way of reporting to us as things progress? Do we have any idea where their fundraising stands at this point?
I do not ask that question.
Okay.
I did not ask that question, I should say.
Okay. Okay, we can, we can revisit that once we get an answer on the, on the sunset for, for fundraising. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I saw Mayor Protim Roach's hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. City manager, regards to the DTE work, you and I have had a conversation about that, whether or not they're going to be done before mayor sets in in terms of the sidewalk replacement. Can you give us an update on that?
So we've been working with DTE. We have weekly meetings with them right now. Obviously, they're on Maryland today and a couple other areas. So certainly, that is something we've talked about, that we need to speed up that restoration. If restoration cannot be completed because of concrete, you know, it's a certain degrees that it will not cure, that we've requested that the DTE, instead of using rocks like they had last year, which actually caused a lot of problems for our public works employees trying to plow the sidewalks, that they use temporary asphalt for this winter, and then they will come back in the spring and as well for those areas of lawn that have not been addressed yet. So we still, you know, I was disappointed. I was hoping we could have DT finish this year, but I think due to COVID and such, it delayed their progress, just like everywhere else. So I imagine DT will be back in town for the early part of next year.
I can attest the fact that that DTE hotline number that you mentioned, it does in fact work. I called them today, left a message, got back to me within about three hours. They were very helpful. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Councilmember Relin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City manager, I was wondering, piggybacking off what Councilmember Robson stated about the sidewalks, we have Halloween coming up on Saturday and a lot of, and we're going to have a big rain on Thursday. Is there, I don't, I don't know what they can do to alert kids that their, the sidewalks are broken and damaged and they, you know, these kids are going to be running like crazy on each sidewalk. I know we have tons of sidewalks here, but I don't know if DT has alerted on that, that they should be highlighting these places that are going to be dangerous for kids to be running and wiping out. The only thing I can think of is putting stakes down and roping it off. I don't think they'll be able to do that, but it's, it's a little disappointing. I've, I've worked with DT personally at my own house and they've been fantastic. I just wish they would keep the safety, the safety up. So I don't know if you have any thoughts on how they can mitigate that for the sidewalks or throw that out to them? Maybe there's certain sidewalks that are more dangerous than others that they can address and rope off. I don't know what your thoughts are on that. The other thing I have is Tifa approved the demolition of the house on Wayburn. Is that for the DPW as well?
That, that is correct.
Okay, and then they're also approved the demo for dunks. They did state that they were going to get us cost on abatement because they didn't do that testing yet. Do you know if that testing had been done yet for asbestos and all that?
They should be in the house working on testing this week.
Okay, and that's going to raise our cost of demolition, obviously, correct?
That's correct.
And you'll share that with us, I'm assuming?
To piggyback, to piggyback back on your earlier DT comments, Councilmember Rayland, so this is something we've discussed heavily in anticipation of Halloween, that we can't just have the current, you know, caution or, you know, we, we have to do a lot better regarding this holiday. So it's something I will refer, I will talk to them again, and our team at Public Works will certainly go around the town to make sure that there's any areas that haven't been addressed that should be addressed, especially those, you know, most busy, go ahead, yep.
No, I was going to say, we're on the same page. I think anything they can do just for that weekend and if they need volunteers or something, I know parents will want to help, but I don't think they can. But even, even like a pylon on a bad sidewalk at the beginning and the end of that sidewalk would alert these kids, and then we can put some notification out to everyone as well as we can, saying, hey, look out for these sidewalks, just, you know, it's, it's going to be cra- it's going to be busy, even though we think it'll be down in numbers, it's, it's going to be a nicer day. I think everyone's still participating as much as they can, so I appreciate your help.
We certainly, yeah, absolutely. We certainly want to make sure the integrity of all those temporary restoration areas are in good shape so that, you know, no one certainly would hurt themselves, so that's something we definitely brought up to DT.
Yeah, working with Brad Smith from, from DT, you connected me with him. He's indicating that they're trying to do some more compacting of sidewalks and things, and, and the one, the one accident seemed to be a big fluke. So I, again, I do appreciate the safety concerns there. One more question is, is your, is your city manager report posted with the minutes on the website after we're done?
It does not.
It's not, okay, is that something we should, should we include that, that city manager report in our minutes?
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. It's got, it has really good information in it, so I think it's, it's good to keep, it's, in case someone's not taking notes, they can follow up on anything. So thank you.
Sounds good.
Okay, Councilmember Reed?
Thank you. A couple of items. First, on the city master plan, you indicated in your report that additional services that MKSK discussed included a parking study, and I know that was part of the agenda for Tifa at their last meeting, and that was, that was tabled. So, you know, I, I don't know if there's an opportunity there to approach that with MKSK, since they will be really delving into our city. But that just jumped out on me in your report, so maybe, since they want to go back to the drawing board a bit there anyway, that's something we can forward to Tifa for consideration?
Yeah, absolutely. It's funny you mentioned that Councilmember Reed. So right after our Tifa discussion, it was tabled, I had my meeting last Friday with the master plan consultants of MKSK. And, you know, that was one of the first things they mentioned of addition- And, you know, that was one of the first things they mentioned of additional services. So as you just stated, I think this is something certainly that the Tifa and the city could partner with, not just for maybe a Tifa parking study, but we could look at our overall city.
Okay, great. And then the other item, and it, it, it relates to the donation and gift policy and agenda setting, and it's something that you and I have been discussing. But I think it's appropriate to bring it up now because it was part of your city manager report. And that is, you know, you and I have been in conversation about a donor and gift policy dating back to the beginning of September, if not August. And I had requested that be on our September agenda. And I provided you with a sample donation and gift policy and along with my analysis. And we kind of went back and forth and decided to table it. We discussed it. I said, fine, table it to October. And so I expected it to be on the agenda for this month. And then you indicated what, to me separately, what's also indicated in your report. So, you know, I have a couple of issues. And one is, you know, I, you know, residents have raised the issue with me, and that's why I've raised the donor and gift policy, as well as some things that I've observed. And I think we are on the same page that we agree we need one. So I definitely want to pursue that. I'm a little concerned that we would go outside of government to sort of vet the policy, because we set the policy. So that's a concern that I have. And then three, which is sort of a broader issue, is what is our agenda, agenda setting policy? We need clarification on that because our rules say that city council members can request to have an item added to a city council meeting agenda at least seven days in advance of a scheduled meeting by contacting the mayor and city manager with an email request, which I did on September 2nd. And I'm certainly not inflexible, but, you know, my, in our conversations, my understanding is the request can be denied. And I, that wasn't my understanding of our rules. And it also, you know, and maybe this is also for unfinished business, but I think we just need to clarify our rules there because I had different expectations when we were discussing that.
Yes. So I do think maybe there is some expectations that we need to clarify as a council and the city manager, you know, my role. So just to give a quick brief background, yes, we did discuss this. This is something certainly we've been vetting. I've been reaching out to my manager colleagues in other communities. And I thank you for providing your policy as an example as well. The one thing I really did want to consider is, you know, this gift policy is certainly something that I think will, you know, be something that the city looks for long term and especially in regards to donations. You know, the Gross Point Park Foundation, you know, our residents in the community, that I would personally like to hear some of their feedback regarding this. Certainly agree with you, Councilmember, that the city council sets this policy. You know, the way I looked at this, this is something that I think would be essential to reach out to our community to get their thoughts and processes. And maybe some of them might have had good best practices that they've worked with other communities and or other, you know, donations that they've worked with. So I'm just trying to, you know, take a look at that, but certainly hear your comments and something, you know, I think that'll be very beneficial for the community and provide further transparency. Since I do know there's been a couple of concerns amongst the public at times. So I welcome that discussion more. I know we'll have that and I'm happy to help clarify. In regards to the council request, I would ask, my interpretation at the time is that the city council can request an item. However, reading, reviewing the document, and maybe I interpreted it wrong, is that it, you know, at that time, it's not required. However, you know, I could ask the city attorney to take a look into that and, you know, something as a further discussion for council.
Certainly, and that's fine. And I think it's always okay to have the discussion. I mean, it took us more than one meeting to come up with our council code of conduct, more than one meeting to come up with our ethics ordinance. And when we have a public meeting and a public discussion, it gives all stakeholders a chance to weigh in. And that's good information for you to take back as you help craft that plant, that, that policy. So, you know, I certainly wasn't expecting to, for our policy to come out of one meeting. But I think it's important for us to have the discussion and to have it while the residents are watching us.
No, absolutely. I completely agree and I welcome that. So thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Fluid?
On, on both of those points, I think there were two, at least two points there. The first one was, it was my understanding as well that if we requested an agenda item, you know, we spent literally hours, I think, on that one point, going back and forth on how the agenda would be set. And that was certainly my understanding as well. We had talked about if somebody wanted something on the agenda and it wasn't on that month's agenda, then council could vote to put it on our next month's agenda. And there was a lot of back and forth on that. And it was my understanding, because I fought really hard for that, that that was what we had decided, that we're not overloaded with superfluous items at this point. So if someone asks, if a council member asks for something to be on the agenda, accepting a case where we might have a ton of stuff and the city manager might say, do you mind if we move it to next month? In which case, I hope we would be reasonable. But with that exception, if a council member wants to bring something up for discussion, then it should be brought up for discussion. And I, I thought we had clarified that and it was actually fairly simple. Regarding what I read today in your manager's report about the donor policy, I would have the same concern. I certainly understand going to other localities and you talking to other city managers and finding out, you know, what best practices are. But I don't think the donors themselves should be engaged in helping to set the donor policy. That, that seems really inappropriate to me.
Okay, thank you.
Nick, did you want me, and I don't have to, but did you want me to address at all the, the policy or sort of my thoughts on that?
If you'd like to, sure.
Yeah, I, and my only thoughts are, I think we need, I think it's pretty clear, we need some additional clarification. I'm not sure the words of the policy necessarily match up with everybody's expectations. And I think we need to go back and look at the minutes. And I, it was a Zoom meeting, so we can re-watch it and just make sure that, that it's clear that what was decided on and voted at the meeting is reflected in the policy. So now is not the appropriate time to do it, but I think that is something we should, we should set, you know, next month to make sure that there is clarity and we have an answer for the council in terms of, again, to make sure that the policy matches up with everybody's expectation and what was voted on importantly.
Thank you. Okay. I think that closes out the manager's report. Good discussion. Thank you, council. We move on to committee and commission reports. We have several, I think, that we should cover. The first one I'll call on is the beautification commission. And Councilmember Relon, you are the representative. Do you have a report for us?
Sorry, I was, I was muted and I couldn't unmute due to the, the crowd not being able to unmute. I just wanted to add one more thing. I do, I do agree with Councilmember Laurie and Councilmember Reed and Councilmember Fluid, that we did agree that if a council member wants something on the agenda, it's on the agenda. We talked about that for at least an hour. There's no, there's no beating around that. If, if, if we want something on the agenda, it gets on the agenda. We all agreed to that. And then the second part of that as well is, as a donor and gift program, it doesn't make sense that we would ask the people on their side of it.
I was remember, Relon, we discussed that and we, on the, on the,
I'm just adding my thoughts. That's why I was elected, Mr. Mayor. I was elected to share my thoughts on this. And I was, I was muted. I was unable to unmute myself. So I wanted to add my comments.
Okay, I didn't see your hand up on, on the manager's.
No, I couldn't unmute myself anyway. Once you mute, it was impossible to unmute. So I, I usually mute myself in between when I'm not talking. So thank you to Leah.
That's beautification, I believe.
Yes, yes. And that's also a commission that you're a part of. So the beautification, we had our virtual plan exchange last week. It was a success. It was a little slow, but during the age of COVID, it was a success. We ended up collaborating with the Facebook group, the Plan Exchange, Gross Point Point, Gross Point Park Plan Exchange Facebook group. And that worked out really well. We got some really good exposure on that. The notifications from the beautification committee and the mayor will be sent out for the beautification awards this week. And in the coming weeks, we'll, we'll deliver the signs and the framed awards to all those winners as well. Congratulations to those folks. And something new, we're trying to push for a young beautification commissioner or a family beautification spot for improving the relationships we have with our kids and our families in the community. So we're brainstorm, we started brainstorming some ideas on how to do that. If we have special meetings where the kids can be joined in and special events where kids can, can learn about how to prune a tree, when to prune it, things like that. If anyone has any ideas on that, please email myself and we'll add you to that conversation. So thank you.
Thank you. Good report. Next, we'll go to the Sustainability Committee. Councilmember Fluid?
Thanks. So first of all, I also wanted to touch on MML because I am council's MML representative, which, if our residents don't know, is the Michigan Municipal League. It's a league of cities, which has an amazing amount of resources available. They have training sessions, they have webinars. And I have attended several of those, but the week of September 30th was actually their annual conference. So for the first time, I got to attend the MML annual conference, which was not in Mackinac. This year, I got to attend it from my couch. But it was excellent. And I think if,
It's better in Mackinac, by the way.
Yeah. I've been to Mackinac, so at least I am not totally missing out. I have been there before, so. But I did feel a little shortchanged. If anybody, if any city residents even are interested in learning more about city government, mml.org is the website, and they have a lot of stuff on there just for free that you can go and check out. So I, I went to a couple of different seminars every day of, of that week and took a lot of notes. They were excellent. I mean, it was, it was really worthwhile. I think Councilmember Hodges may have attended something as well. I'm not sure. I got some great notes on community policing initiatives in particular and on long-term city planning during the time of COVID. Those were two things that I, that I noted were excellent. And a lot of those things, if you've been to a lot of training sessions, a lot of times, in my experience, you come out with two or three notes. There's a lot of illustration and storytelling and not a lot of actually meat that you can take out of those sessions. These were, these were really good and I'm very glad that I attended. And then on to sustainability. Sustainability last met in February. And we were on hold for a while because we were planning to do an audit of all of our city processes and see where we could make improvements. To make a long story short, our master plan took all of that money, and that's fine. I think that's an excellent use of those funds. And so what we are focused on now is trying to kind of come up with plans on our own, at least, at least in the short term. So at our sustainability meeting, the first thing we talked about was, we had a presentation from a couple of park residents who work on these type of initiatives. One of them kind of collaborates with her own company and other vendors. And one of them is actually the CEO of a company that produces electric vehicle charging stations. So they gave us quite a bit of information about electrical, electric vehicle charging stations, as well as a rebate program that DTE has going on right now, which would allow us to put in charging stations actually at zero cost. And then going from there, as far as maintaining the charging stations and whether or not we would charge residents to use them, that would be up to us. And so we would have to decide about what to do with the charging station once we had it installed. But that's something that Sustainability Committee is going to be discussing further. We have several other initiatives that we're looking into. The city manager is doing research on a whole checklist of things that we came up with for him. We would like to participate in the Michigan Green Communities Challenge, which has like a bronze, silver, and gold level. And we are actually already doing some of the initiatives that are on that challenge list. And then the last thing I wanted to mention that we're working on is some items that we could put on a sustainability page on the city's website. So for instance, the city manager had said there are certain times of day that it actually costs you less to water your lawn. So that's an environmental initiative and it's also something that would save residents money. So we're going to try to make a list of those things and then put those things on the city's website. So we kind of have a lot to go through and we hope to meet again in early December.
Very good. Thank you. Next one, I'm sorry, Mayor Protim, did you have a question for, or a comment related to that committee?
Well, actually, what I have is a compliment to the committee. I joined halfway through the, the meeting. And I have to say, I couldn't be more impressed what the committee is doing. A lot of great ideas between the committee and the administration, a lot of exciting things. And I was very, very much impressed in the direction the committee is going. I just wanted to compliment the committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Very good. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the Planning Commission. Much of this was covered one way or another in the manager's report, but I'll fill in some of the blanks. The Planning Commission met on October 8th for the sole purpose of selecting the master plan consultant to help develop the, help the commissioners develop the city's master plan, an update to it. The current fiscal year budget provides $50,000 for consulting fees to support the effort. In response to the formal RFP, the city received several proposals. The city council, in this meet, in an earlier meeting, narrowed it down to four finalists. The finalists were MKSK McKenna, OHM Advisors, and Beckett and Raider. MKSK was, was selected and approved by the commission. Their bid was $50,000, as was alluded to by Councilmember Fluid. That pretty well took care of the consulting budget that we had in, in the fiscal year. But that process, as the city manager mentioned, is getting underway and I'm looking forward to a robust update to our master plan. That's it. Thank you. Councilmember Reed?
Yes, Mayor. I just wanted to mention, and I, I should have contacted you, and I will keep this very brief. But I am the council liaison to SEMCOG, Southeastern Michigan Council of Governments. And their general assembly met also virtually on October 15th and 16th. SEMCOG is similar to MML, although it's more focused on transportation and infrastructure and environment. And there's many great resources and tools for local governments, including census data, demographic data. So anyone who's interested, similar to what Councilmember Fluid said, I encourage you to go on their, to visit their website, semcog, S-E-M-C-O-G dot org, and play around with some of their information and data and resources. So that's, that's all I had to say about SEMCOG.
Thank you. I, I'll echo what Councilmember Fluid and you just mentioned. I've, I've got experience with both MML and SEMCOG and using some of the resources. And they're both outstanding resources to local governments. And, and I know Gross Point Park over the years has taken advantage of that many times and, and continues to in the future. So thank you. And then the final one is the, is the Tifa Board, which city manager covered much of that in his report, but you may have some other things to add. City Manager, size them.
So thank you, Mayor Denner. As was previously stated, the Tifa approved funding for the demolition of a Tifa home and Verdunk's, former Verdunk's Bakery, which would be part of the DPW yard. There was discussion regarding parking studies, which was tabled for a later discussion. And the Tifa had a update regarding its COVID support program, its social district. And we as well set our informational hearing date for November 23rd at 7:00 PM. That covers about it for Tifa.
Okay, thank you. I think that's it for committee and commission reports. Did I leave anyone out inadvertently? Okay, great. Thank you. Good reports. Next agenda item is unfinished business. And the first is an update on the city council vacancy. And I'll ask the city manager to provide us a, an update. As we all know, the deadline for applicants to submit their, their application of interest is this Wednesday. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor Denner. So city council before you, mind you that this document has been updated a little since then because we've had some more applications come in. Councilmember Granal's term expired on September 20.
Councilmember Granal's term expired on September 28th with the acceptance of his resignation by the city council. 60 days from that point would be November 27th. To avoid a special election, the remaining term, which expires in November 2021, the city council will have to decide on a new member before the 27th of November. Special election would not be permitted until May of 2021, according to the Wayne County Clerk. As of today, there are now 10 applications for the council vacancy. At this time, the administration proposes a special meeting of the council to interview the candidates on the 5th, 9th, 10th, or 12th, which would be held via Zoom. I would recommend we consider the 10th or 12th or both at this time. With the number of candidates, I recommend an earlier meeting time. COVID numbers are trending up and continue to rise, so it's something to consider. We should, I would advise a face-to-face meeting. However, the council and candidates be considered at this time, just due to the integrity of this process. So going through this, obviously, it's been changing day by day with the amount of applications we've had. So what I'd like to entertain for the council is just a couple of suggestions I had and see what your pleasure is for how we do this process. One option is that the council and candidates all meet at one meeting, and we go ahead and try and hash this out at one. And at that time, what I'm looking to do or consider is an introduction by the council or the future council member in three questions per candidate. That would be the same randomized questions for each candidate. On average, that could take about 20 minutes. So if we do the rough math right now, that's, we'll say about three, three and a half hours that would take just for the 10 applicants at this time. Or if you want to consider this, council and candidates still meet at City Hall, but this could be broken up into two meetings. The first meeting, we could wheel down the candidates down to five. And then afterwards, we go to a second meeting, which could be the other five, which we then determine the the council would determine the vacancy. So I just wanted to throw that out there and gather your thoughts and suggestions. But at this time, I would certainly consider if we could look at the 10th or 12th as the best target dates and or both.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to make just a few comments before we get further into the discussion. But I think it's important that we give city managers some feedback in terms of our sense of, of the process. He's continuing to work on it. He's spent a lot of time on this. But you get different answers when you have four or five candidates than when you have 10 or 12, and we're up to 10 right now, and we still have a couple of days left. Also, we discussed at the last meeting that it's always desirable to meet face-to-face for, for something like this. And it would be, if you look at the COVID numbers, you might, you might come to the conclusion it's prudent not to meet face-to-face at this time. However, I think that as the city manager has delved into this, he's determined that in order to maintain the integrity of the process, it may be necessary for council and the candidates to meet face-to-face in a socially-distanced masked environment and have the public observe through, through electronic presence. So that, that is the, the direction that the city manager is leaning and recommending right now. I wanted to make that clear from his comments. Although, you know, it's, it's something that will have, it'll have to be carefully planned and laid out, given the, the COVID situation. Councilmember Reed.
Thank you, Mayor. Just in reviewing the motion that we passed in the last meeting, we talked about exploring options, including working with the public schools to livestream the meetings. Pierce Auditorium would potentially be a good venue for that, both in terms of using their technology, I'm assuming it's available there, as well as having the space to spread out both council and candidates. And then the other item in the motion was consulting with the League of Women Voters. They, they did recently, and it wasn't, it wasn't an interview, but it was, and they do this every year for all contested local elections. They do candidate forums, and they did it for the school board virtually, and they had a large pool of candidates. They divided it into two groups. That would be a little different than for our purposes, because I, I think we have to have this as an open meeting. I think they had it as a closed meeting and later broadcast it, but that was for a different purpose. But I'm wondering if we have reached out to the League of Women Voters for their assistance.
So that's something I need to reach out to them still at this time. It's something I'm just certainly exploring from city, the city standpoint, what we can do, but that's my next contact is reaching out to the League of Women Voters.
They're, they're a great resource. Highly encourage it.
Okay, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. City Manager, in your earlier comment, you mentioned three questions by each council member during your, under suggestion in terms of the Q and A. Did I hear that right?
Yes. So what we would do, Councilmember Robson, for an example, is that you would have an introduction by the candidate for city council, followed by three questions that were, that are asked of each and every candidate to ensure that every candidate gets the same questions asked.
So it's three questions, not 18?
Three. So each, so candidate one receives the three questions, candidate two, so on, so forth, are the same thing in a randomized order of those questions.
All right. I did happen to talk to, incidentally, to the Mayor Protem of Harper Woods. They just completed a vacancy process in September. It was kind of interesting. Basically, they did what the city manager is suggesting, one, two, or three important questions. At that time, the council would vote and vote the numbers down to three or four. Then continue on to six or seven set-type questions, and the council would vote for one. Should a applicant get four votes, that applicant would be the next city manager. Just food for thought.
Next council member, I'm sorry. The next council member, you misspoke.
So it seems like a tried and true method. You might want to check with them on how, how they did it. In terms of a live meeting, I think I would favor that, although I respect the concerns of others in regards to COVID. So that, that has to, has to be hashed out. If we do Zoom, then there's an obvious concern about electronic security and the sequestering of applicants electronically. How can we handle it? That's going to be a challenge. How do we know they're not using their, their cell phones or another person in the house is in on the public meeting? So that would be a challenge. Okay, thank you.
Okay, further comment, Councilmember Flut.
Um, so I'm a little bit confused because I, the, the information in our council packet says city manager would advise a face-to-face meeting not be considered at this time. So.
He's, I think he's amended that recommendation based on further research.
Okay.
In the amount of candidates, we received Councilmember Flut as well.
Okay. Um, I would agree. I, I don't think in any circumstances we should be meeting in council chambers. If we could get the Pierce Auditorium, that might be acceptable. But the other issue with that is we're getting great engagement by having Zoom meetings. Obviously, we can't have Zoom meetings for all eternity, but we do have a lot of residents engaged. And I think unless we are planning on also broadcasting this process, we're not going to get the resident engagement. Go, yeah, go ahead.
Oh, yes. So Councilmember Flut, the thought I had, and I certainly do agree with you with the Zoom engagement, is that theoretically, we could have the council socially distanced within the chambers. Each member of council, including administration, would have to have probably a laptop or some device in front of them. So it'd be almost like a normal meeting, except we'd still have our laptops in front of us so the public could see. We would have the applicant out in front of the council, so then the public could still see that applicant, so ensuring that there would still be that engagement process. Just wanted to say that.
And so what you're suggesting is whatever forum we're in, the applicants would be outside, and they would come in one at a time to answer questions.
That is correct. Yes.
Okay. So, but then that brings us back to a security issue, which is that if the public is watching the forum, they could potentially watch one applicant answer questions and then text their favorite applicant what the questions are going to be. And I don't think, I'm just mentioning that, I don't think we can completely lock down the security issue. I would, I would like to, I would like to make it as fair as we can, but I don't think we can totally, totally do that.
One, one suggestion I did have Councilmember Flut as a thought is we could have the candidates come to City Hall and be socially distant. I know it could be a long time for those candidates, you know, certainly all their, so they're all here in one place due to that security issue as a thought.
And I believe we'd request that they not use their cell phones, you know, much like being in court.
Right. So the last point I would, I would want to make is, is I agree, I'm sure we can learn from other municipalities. I asked one of the Board of Education members today how they did it because they had a large applicant pool for their open seat. But League of Women Voters, one thing that they do that we might also consider is they, you know, they do put all of those applicants up there at one time. So if we wanted to break the pool into two groups and have them all right there, and if we're asking three to five questions, you know, you start with this one and you go down the line. And then the next time, you start with the next one, and you go down the line. So everybody's kind of getting an opportunity to be on the spot for one question, but get a little more time to think about it for the next question. It's the way that they did our candidate forum last year. It's the way that they did the Board of Education forum. But I think in that case, we, we would probably have to break into two separate groups.
The logistics problem in terms of the integrity of that process is a, is a challenge because trying to keep group two electronically sequestered during group one's discussion, which is an open meeting and would have to be broadcast in some way, is where the challenge comes in.
Or we might have to have two separate groups of questions. I feel like there are a lot of details we need to hash out here.
Yeah, and that's, and that's, it's, it's got, as, as the candidate pool grew, the challenge got a little bit greater, so working on it. Did I see somebody else want to comment? I, I'll put in my, my suggestion that the recommendation that we reserve the 10th and or the 12th. I, I would support that, and whether we have, have the 10th and the 12th or just one or the other will depending on what, depend on whether we land on a process that we think is efficient enough to get done in one meeting, or whether it would take two meetings to, one meeting to narrow the field, and the second meeting to consider that narrowed field in greater depth, so that we're not overly tired and be able to, to judge. So that's really a question that, you know, would you rather have a, you know, like a six-hour meeting? Or would you rather have it in two stages in two different days? So that's something that sense of council could be important on. Councilmember Reed.
I guess a question on that, City Manager Seislin said you anticipated, you would recommend starting earlier, and I think that was probably good. Were you thinking five or six o'clock?
Probably at least five o'clock. I believe, Councilmember Reed, if you recall, my city manager interview, was that about five o'clock? I think it started. I'd, I'd shoot for five, but that could be a challenge for working people, so five or six at least.
Everybody's working from home, so.
Yeah.
There is that.
And so if we did two meetings, and let's say we get a couple more candidates, we have 12. So we had two groups of six for one meeting. I'm not holding you to this, but what are you estimating the length of that meeting? Two hours, three hours?
I think if we were to do the three questions and introduction as proposed, I'm going to guess three and a half hours probably for six candidates. So you're talking seven hours potentially.
Okay. I do, I do encourage you to talk to the League of Women Voters on that because they're very good at the time management of the whole process because they give their timed responses. And I'm assuming you're anticipating that, but as opposed to, I mean, I think the city manager interview, we gave you a timed slot, but your responses aren't really timed. But when they conduct the forum, they give, you know, let's say, two minutes for opening statements. And then when they do their line of questioning, and I, I'm not going to get this right, but it might be, you know, a minute and a half per question. And they do a good job of keeping it moving.
Yeah, I think, I think we would have to do timed intervals like that. I don't think there'd be any other choice, but we're at least have a fair amount of practice with doing the timing given in the public comment section, session. So I think, I think I agree with you with that on that for sure.
And that's something Councilmember Reed, I did think about too, that an introduction would be three minutes, and those response questions about, you know, at max, two minutes.
Okay.
Okay, Councilmember Rowland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I, it's, it's in this new era of COVID, it's, it's really hard. I mean, if, other than the three new members, Michelle and Amay and myself, we have Councilmember Reed, Councilmember Robson, and you, Mr. Mayor, that were elected. I don't know how we could get the same quality from three questions that we ask somebody at two minutes apiece to determine who's going to fill our council seat. You know, we, you, you three are fantastic. I don't know if, if we can fill a seat with three que, it just seems like a really hard process to pick a seat.
I would, I would, I would think that the, that that abbreviated process is really to narrow the field, not necessarily to get to the final discussion, and that we have a second round with the narrowed field where perhaps we have another group of questions.
Another different set of questions in the long run.
So that if we're limited to, say, three, four, or maybe five people at most.
So we would do, we would do 10th and the 12th, sounds like a good idea then, to get two meetings for sure confirmed, at least to get to begin with. And then we can keep, keep narrowing down this process. But I agree with you, two meetings is, is almost necessary.
Councilmember Hodges.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm generally flexible, so, but I will weigh in, so at least you have some input if you need a tiebreaker at some point. I think if we can keep it to one night, that's a better decision-making approach because you can compare apples to apples more readily. It's just much easier to assess, and then it protects the security too. If you go 24 hours before, between groups, it's easier for information to be exchanged. And I too would really encourage a look at the League of Women Voters for a number of reasons. One, Mr. City Manager, I think it helps protect your neutrality in this whole situation because you report to the council at all, and I don't think you'd ever want to be in a position to have to, you know, manage the, over-manage the process and thereby impact your relationship with a potential future council member. So if you can remove yourself from that, and then also take a, a large voluminous task off your list of things to do, that just from a practical standpoint, that makes a lot of sense. And then I had the opportunity to sit through the school district vacancy process that was led by the League of Women Voters. And they really have, and I know that point has already been made, but I think to add to that, they understand the efficiency. There was a large number of candidates that they had, I want to say it's 18. I don't think I'm confusing it with the current pool, but nonetheless, it was a large number, and they were able to get through them efficiently in one evening. And also, we're good at extracting meaningful information that really advanced the decision-making process. And Mr. Mayor, to your point, they did then narrow the pool in a way that also helped the trustees find some common ground and finding and identifying the person. I think they all narrowed their top choices down to three or something, and then they looked for the overlap. You know, who had the most votes to narrow to. So they really are accustomed to doing this, and I think that protects all of us and, you know, and maintains our ability to be objective by charging them with that responsibility. So those are my two shiny pennies to contribute to the discussion.
Before I go back to Councilmember Reed, Mayor Protem, you had your hand up. I don't know if you still have something.
Yeah, again, and I'll be quiet, but through my discussions with Mayor Protem of Harper Woods, this is a new process to us. It seems daunting even time-wise. But according to Mayor Protemp Constantino, they had seven applicants, and the process took about two hours. What they did is each candidate answered one question. They had five minutes to introduce themselves, talk about their qualifications. From that point, the council selected three out of the seven. The other were dismissed. Then the next step, each of the remaining candidates were asked eight related questions, city-related questions. After that was done, council voted. After that was done, council voted, uh, a candidate. They had, each council member had one vote. If a candidate got four votes, that became the next, uh, city council member. And in my discussion, it seemed, uh, fairly efficient.
And that's all I have. I think, I think, okay, council member Reed, I'm sorry.
And, uh, my comment, and, and I agree with everything that council member Hodges said in terms of the League of Women Voters protecting the integrity of the process. Um, one thing that they always do is, uh, and I, and I believe they did it in advance for this most recent candidate forum, but they solicit questions from residents and they vet those questions. So they're not, so they're good questions. They're not redundant questions. Um, it could be a small portion of the process, but it does give the residents a voice. Because really this, this process is standing in the shoes of the residents. Therefore, I mean, they elected us, but typically they elect all of us. Um, so I just think it's worth, I mean, I, I guess we're kind of beating a dead horse here, but I think it's worth having that discussion with the League of Women Voters. Their resources are excellent.
Okay, thanks. Um, let's get back to giving, providing guidance on the dates. Uh, should we reserve the 10th or the 12th or both at this time? And what's the earliest that you'd be willing to start? And then, uh, city manager can fill in the blanks and start communicating with us. Um, council member Rellen.
Yeah, I agree with you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I think we need both dates. If we don't need both dates, we can always cancel the second date. But I think we need both dates. Um, I'm not sure if I'm the only one going to the office, but I am going to the office, but I can be flexible enough to start at five or even four if we needed it.
Okay. So, um, let's take the earliest time, uh, that you suggested. If, if it made sense to try to do this, uh, starting at four, uh, could everybody on the 10th and or the 12th start at four?
Is that too early for some?
Five, the right number.
Is it also going to depend on the venue and when the venue is available?
We'll find it, we'll find a venue that we can get started, that we can use.
Yeah, we have the movie theaters as well.
Mayor, I think the, uh, the dates are fine, both dates. A little concerned about a 4:00 PM starting time. I think there's a lot of people that will be working. We'll be able to view the interview.
So perhaps five, perhaps five would be the early start. I'm, I'm, I'm happy with that. Obviously I'm flexible and I, I agree with you on the five o'clock maybe, uh, are better for more people. Uh, council member Reed.
Yeah, I can do five o'clock. The 10th does happen to be my 30th wedding anniversary. I don't know if my husband's watching. Um, so, I mean, that's a Tuesday.
Well, you probably weren't going to go out anyway.
I mean, I would prefer, if we were going to do two days, we could do them back to back, the 11th and 12th would be, would be my preference, but, um.
The 11th is, uh, Veterans Day.
It is, I understand. Is that a, that's a city holiday as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I ask why we, initially, I know, again, we had fewer, we were probably expecting fewer candidates, but we had talked about doing this earlier so that the new council member could be seated on the ninth. So why have we ruled out the fifth at this point?
The election?
I think due to the elections, um, at this time, council member fluid, um, you know, time-wise, talking with our city clerk more, on the options that we provided, I think, uh, for their time and staff, depending on, uh, what happens in the general election. Uh, there could be some, it could be a long night. Uh, staff could be working into Wednesday and/or potentially Thursday. So we're kind of preparing in case if anything, uh, requires more time of staff to work on the election.
Okay.
Okay. I think that's probably pretty good feedback for, uh, city manager to go from here. And I would expect that he'll continue to communicate with us and, uh, between now and our next council meeting, which is on November 9th, but by then we should be, uh, locked. And, and then soon after, um, city manager, I, I assume that, uh, shortly after the, we get all of the applicants, at some point you'll be, um, releasing those names to the council.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor Denner. So yes, um, I should, I should have said that. Uh, those names will be revealed. I think I have the deadline at four o'clock, so by, um, the end of the close of business, uh, we'll go ahead and release those names. And we'll also post, uh, those applications online.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, I think that's our update on council vacancy. Thank you. Excellent discussion and important. Uh, council member Hodges.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I just was hoping to, um, sort of set the stage and plant a seed with all of my colleagues. Cause I think we're at a really critical point along the continuum of change. And this appointment's going to have a real impact on the future course the city takes. So, and we have new elected and administrative leadership and the community is engaged like never before. And our community thus far has made its voice heard through a pretty impressive advocacy effort, you know, often using militancy, to increase the pace of change. And those efforts have been effective because the issues are on the cha- table and changes here. And I know advocacy, I know militancy, I live them every day because they're woven into my professional life. And I know where the true art comes in, um, which I believe lies in knowing when to use one method or the other and to effectively advance a cause. And I really believe we as a community are at a pivot point. And that militancy's been effective and successful, and now we're at the point of diminishing returns. And we really need to shift gears, um, or we'll divide and polarize the community to the point where it'll take years to recover. Um, and true and sustainable and enduring change, uh, will remain elusive if we don't, um, figure out that pivot point. So this kind of change, the kind of change I think we all want, um, is one when we're truly in partnership with, uh, one another, when we're collaborative, when we co-create a future, uh, with a healthy tension rather than division underpinning us. So I think this appointment is going to be our first real opportunity to pivot and unite toward the future. And an important benchmark and testimony to that fact, um, will be if we can find the person that we can all unanimously appoint and agree on. So that's the kind of candidate I'll be looking for, is someone who can unite us, who can help lead down the path forward, whom we can all work with and who can really build toward that trust that we're continuing to strive toward. So I hope each of my colleagues really shares, um, those thoughts in this endeavor and that our candidates can strive for that same aspirational goal, which is a highly functioning community driven toward the highest outcome. So I just really wanted to, you know, set a tone and get us all thinking, um, ahead about what we're looking for and what we want and how we can really unite as a team to bring on our next colleague to help move our community forward.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now let's move on to, uh,
One more thing, I'm sorry.
I'm sure.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, so we don't have the actual process we're going to follow defined yet. We'll figure that out. We'll, we'll discuss that at the next council meeting.
Yeah, I'm sure that, I'm sure the city manager will communicate to, that to us before the next council meeting, but we'll have a chance to, uh, just actually discuss it, uh, on the 9th, um, before we get to the 10th or 12th.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, um, council comment under unfinished business. Is there any council comment under unfinished business? Council member Hodges.
Sorry for taking up so airtime, so much airtime. This should be quick.
Can we quick line a timer?
Yes, please. I'm getting paid extra tonight, right? Um, I, I feel like we forgot to really salute Dan Grano, um, a council member Grano. He.
We are, we are going to, uh, we're going to address that at the November meeting in a more formal way.
Okay, great. That's what I wanted to make sure, that we had some endeavor to do that. So thank you.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tem.
Mayor, uh, I'd like to commend you on your diversity awareness. I know there was an earlier comment, uh, that implied that you are not, that's incorrect. Since you have been mayor, you have been very diversity conscious. You've had a minority, you assigned to minorities on recreation commission. Uh, two women to planning, the most recently, uh, an African-American qualified woman to the Tifa. And that's all on you and your good work and your good consciousness. Uh, I'm getting sick and tired of this undercurrent, but you are not diversity conscious. You are and you will continue to be, and I thank you for that.
Well, thanks for that comment. Okay, council member Fluid.
I had just two things I wanted to follow up about. One was to check with, uh, Chief Pallone if he's still on here to ask if there are any updates from that program with the NAACP.
Yes, hold on. Thank you, uh, councilman Fluid. Yes, uh, so we had our, uh, last meeting, uh, last week. A couple of things, I was able to introduce, uh, Jim Bostock, uh, to the committee, uh, as well as Jana O'Korn from Rose Point City. So, uh, both of those will be engaged as members, uh, on the committee. So they had their first, uh, introduction to them and participated in the meeting. And we had a very, uh, a good meeting, um, discussed several issues, um, concerning, um, race relations of between the, the, um, cities and the, uh, constituents. And, uh, it's, they've been very productive meetings and will continue to meet, uh, I, we've invited them, uh, to an in-person meeting. If we, uh, uh, can, if everybody is, uh, COVID conscious, uh, so that we can, uh, like I say, get a, a face-to-face meeting and still social distance and, uh, go over some of our training programs and some of the ways that we're, uh, training and de-escalation, uh, as well as cultural diversity and show them some of the, uh, things that we're doing. So, uh, that continues to go very well. Uh, it's a great committee and, uh, so we're enjoying it.
Thank you. And, and then my other question was, um, to check in again with the city clerk. Um, I'm basically going to ask her what I asked her last time, which is, um, people are confused still. Um, it's sometimes hard to find information on the SOS website or there is conflicting information or, um, you know, they get conflicting information from their friends or through hearsay. Can the city clerk just take a moment again and explain to everybody again, uh, about absentee ballots and where they can drop off their ballot and, and all of that stuff for the residents who are on with us tonight?
Yes, you can fill out in the application. You can get it online or through the state website. Fill out the application. You can either mail it in or you can bring it in, wait for your ballot, and we will process it. It takes about five minutes. They can vote at a city hall. There's a drop box right there. Or they can hand it to one of the, uh, clerks in the office and we'll make sure they sign it and we'll deposit it into our absentee ballots. It's as simple as that. There's a drop box outside in the driveway. We have one outside the front of city hall and one inside city hall. So there's three locations they can drop their ballots off at.
And I believe, is it the, the 30th is the last day for mailing out the ballots? After that point, if they bring in their ballot application, they have to.
It's actually the 31st Saturday. So we're open on Saturday until five o'clock. And, uh, ballots will be issued up until that time. Uh, and we'll also go to the post office and get app, and get the mail. So if there's any applications in the mail, we can process those and they'll go out in the mail that day. You can still get an absentee ballot up till four o'clock on Monday and, uh, vote it right in the office. Can't take it out of the office.
Okay, so on Monday, you can still pick up an absentee ballot, but you have to fill it out and drop it off that day.
And then on. You can't leave it. You cannot leave the office that day. So if you came in and got one for yourself, you'd have to vote it right there and, and sign it and, and give it back to us. You're not allowed to take it out of the office.
Okay, and then obviously on the day of the election, there's no more absentee balloting. At that point, you actually have to go in person.
Right.
I think that covers everything. I don't know if anybody else has any other detail they want to make sure to clarify. Thank you.
Council member Reed.
Yeah, just, uh, the office will be open until 5:00 PM. It will open at what time in the morning?
Eight o'clock.
At 8:00 AM, okay. And then I just have one more comment, um, on the, um, uh, the council vacancy selection process. Um, I, I agree with council member Hodges that it would be great to find a candidate that we can all agree on. Um, I would disagree about militancy. I think we have some very passionate residents and I suspect that some of those will seek to serve, but, um, I haven't experienced militancy among our residents, at least, um, in my, uh, in my view. Thank you. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's, um, let's close out unfinished business and move on to new business.
I have one comment, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, council member Rellen.
Thank you. Sorry, sorry. Um, I just wanted to let the, the residents know I've been in touch with, uh, city manager Seisland and chief Pallone in trying to find a process or a support. We're trying to come up with, I'm trying to come up with the right term of an academy to, um, to possibly support, um, minorities in being hired by our public safety and city offices. Uh, I know, uh, we had some email exchanges where, where I may have misspoken and crossed the, uh, uh, may have intended to say, hey, we need to hire someone of color, but that wasn't my intent. Um, I'm trying to work with them to, to determine how we can have kind of a, a support system to, to qualify people of minorities. Um, that includes people of color, women, um, any disabilities to possibly be up to our level, our high level of Rose Point Public Safety. It's, it's higher than a lot of, a lot of other cities, which is fantastic. But, um, it seems, it seems like we're lacking on that. So obviously we can't mandate that. So is there a way for us to support that to happen? And maybe they won't get hired by our city, but we can support them in, in getting up to that standard and getting, helping other cities out. So I'll be continuing that, those conversations. If any of the residents have comments on that, they can email me on that to support that. Uh, the second thing is, um, this is to the city attorney, uh, Jake, Mr. Hollitt. Um, I'm still waiting for a written opinion, um, about the art center and why that process wasn't ultimately approved by the elected officials of this city.
Yeah, and I, I do owe that to you. I'm sorry for the delay in that. That's, that's on me. Um, I will commit to get that to you and everybody else on the council, uh, this week.
Okay, thank you.
That's on me. I, I, I had it mostly done. I thought I had finished it and then I had backburdered it unfortunately. And so now I, I need to finish that and get it to you, but you are correct.
Thank you. A lot of, yes. A lot of residents have reached out to me and I told them I would ask. It's been, uh, over two months. So thank you so much. I appreciate it.
I will get that, I will get that this week, council member.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's close out unfinished business and move on to the next.
Can I have, mayor, can I please say one thing? I, I have a correction on the hours for Saturday. I said eight to five. It's actually eight to four.
Eight to four, okay.
Yes. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Um, new business. The first item under new business is, uh, uh, zoning board of appeals. There is a variance. Now to remind everyone, um, we, the council will now, uh, convene as the zoning board of appeals. Uh, per city charger, per city charter, uh, city council has the responsibility to sit as the zoning board of appeals, uh, to deal with, uh, variance requests. Um, and so that's, that's next agenda item. We will sit as the zoning board of appeals. Uh, the process will be that, uh, I'll ask the administration to, uh, introduce the variance requests, um, and, uh, comment on it. Um, then we'll ask the petitioner to, um, make their, state their case to us. Um, I'll then ask for, uh, any of the, uh, neighbors that were within the, uh, relevant, um, area that they want to comment verbally to us to, uh, to make, uh, their comments. Uh, this, this should be generally, uh, people that are, uh, in the immediate neighborhood. And then, uh, we'll open it up to council questions and ultimately we'll entertain a motion. And then, uh, further discussion if necessary and a vote. So that is the process we'll try to follow. Um, and, uh, I'll turn it over to the administration, uh, to get us started.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Denner. So before you, uh, we had a zoning board of appeals application from Mr. Rich.
I was going to say, have we, have we admitted the petitioner?
Uh, let me ask, is Mr. Richard Tepper available?
Oh, yes, I'm online.
Okay, good. Okay, continue. I'm sorry.
Okay. Uh, so Mr. Richard Tepper Jr., um, has, uh, applied for his zoning board of appeals application. He lives on 1200 Devonshire and he's seeking a variance regarding, uh, the setback of his, uh, proposed, uh, building. And so I'll read for you tonight, um, the, uh, notice that was, uh, handed out to those residents within 300 feet of Mr. Tepper's home. Uh, Mr. Tepper, uh, of 1200 Devonshire has requested a hearing for variance from section 2781, schedule limiting height, bulk, density and area by zoning district. This applicant wishes to erect a 20, 2,120 square foot addition, which will not meet the required rear and side yard setbacks per article X, schedule of regulation, section 2781, uh, which is the RA residential, uh, requirement. Uh, approval of this proposal would require the zoning board of appeals grants a variance. Uh, this meeting will be heard by the city council tonight at seven. A site plan was available for examination within the public service department located in city hall. And, um, with that said, I will, uh, ask Mr. Ron Supel, our building official, to, uh, introduce his comments, uh, to the city council.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Loud and clear, Ron. Yep.
All right. This is to, uh, mayor and council, the resident at 1200 Devonshire. The resident at 1200 Devonshire wishes to erect a 2,100 square foot residential building for his elderly parents. The homeowner wishes to add two additions to the existing 3,500 square foot home. The first addition will include two new garage stalls for a total of five with an in-suite bathroom above. The second addition will be a three-story addition behind the garages with an elevator. The addition will include a full basement, a mudroom, laundry room, powder room, master suite, home office, open kitchen with living space and natural fireplace. On the upper level, a bedroom and in-suite, laundry chute, to downstairs and a transition room to the existing room above the garage. The new residential addition will not meet the City of Rose Point Park zoning requirements, Article X, Schedule of Regulations RA, which requires a rear yard setback of 30 feet and a side, and a side yard setback of 10 feet, eight inches. The new addition will only have a rear yard setback of 19 feet and a side yard setback of three feet and seven feet, six and five, eight inches respectively. And it will be creating two residential homes on a single-family residential lot. That is my comment and I will pass it back to mayor and council and city manager.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Supel. There were two written comments that were in the council's package. One was generally favorable to the request and the other was not favorable to the request. The council has reviewed those, I think. With that, I'd like to ask the petitioner to state their case to the zoning board of appeals.
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, my name is Richard Tepper. I'm at 1200 Devonshire and my parents are getting to the point where, you know, they have some medical challenges and my wife and I want to have a move-in with us. Obviously with our, our current house, it's built in 1926, it's not really possible for them to live in our home. So therefore we, we want to proceed adding the addition. The addition actually is, it's basically, I think you guys have the drawings I provided. It's, it's not three stories. It's actually just an addition off of my existing garage, which is a story and a half essentially. So I intend to maintain the exact same character of a home, use all the same finishes. Be very respectful of the fact that I don't want it to look like an addition. My wife and I have worked very hard, living in this home since 1994, to try to maintain its character and, and quality and, yeah, I think if, like I said, it'll fit in, fit in with the existing character. I do have two garages added to it from my parents' vehicle, but there's, basically it's just a single floor living space for them on the main floor with a bedroom en suite and then upstairs maybe a, a living quarters for a nurse if necessary. Probably nothing more than that.
Hey, is that, is that it? I mean, I'm sure we'll have some questions for you.
Sure.
But before we get to the questions, I'd like to know if there are any neighbors or people that have an interest in, direct interest in this that would like to comment and we want to use a similar process to our public comment process. City manager?
Mayor, would you like me to read the public comments that submitted in the council packet?
Yes, that'd be helpful.
Okay, thank you. So the first one, good morning. My name is Mike Keel and I reside at 1216 Devonshire. My wife and I met with our neighbors, Richard and Donna Tepper, on August 11th to review the initial site plans for the addition at 1200 Devonshire. Our principal concern with the addition was potential drainage and flooding issues due to water redirection toward our home and yard. We discussed this concern with Richard and Donna. Both agreed that downspouts and related water drainage from the addition would be directed south, southeast toward Kirchville. My wife and I are accepting of initial site plans and request for variance conditional on downspouts and related water drainage from the addition being directed south, southeast toward Kirchville. And my next written comment was from Mary Ann Nelson, a resident of 1230 Buckingham. I am strongly opposed to a building variance that would allow a 2,120 square foot structure to be built at 1200 Devonshire for the following reasons. Number one, I viewed the building plan that has been made available at city hall. It found that this structure is not exactly just an addition to the home as it has been described in the notice. It is actually more of a second residence that happens to be connected to the existing home by a garage wall that does not even provide entrance to the new structure. It is a completely separate living residence with its own separate kitchen, et cetera. Many single-family, single-home residents are less than the 2,120 square foot that is in this instance being called an addition. In effect, this will allow two houses to be built on the same lot. Number two, city hall personnel says that this building is intended for relatives of the owner. It may not be rented, but in the future, this restriction could also be waived. Number three, if one homeowner can get such a substantial building code variance, it opens the door and sets a precedent that would, that could allow other homeowners to follow suit. I do not want our neighborhood to become one of supersized homes that are overly large for the lot space. Mayor Danner, those are my written comments that were submitted and I will ask Leah if there's any public comments in the queue. And for those that are wishing to speak, what we're going to do is assistant to the manager, Smith, is going to put in a timer that will be for three minutes. And if you could please state your name and your city of residence for the record, we would appreciate that. So Leah?
And I would ask for this case because it's relevant to it being a variance that the actual address.
Yep. Okay. Leah, any comment?
And thank you, city manager Sizeland. Yes, I do have one member of the public in the queue right now currently. I would like to remind participants that if you are a neighbor and you would like to comment during this time, you can press star nine on your phone keypad or use the raise hand function on the participant list to be added to the queue. So the first person in the queue is Mr. Becker. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself, please, and then state your full name and address. Please go ahead. Mr. Becker, can you try talking for me? I'm sorry, Mayor Danner. I see that he's unmuted, so I'm wondering if there's a volume issue. Do you want me to come back to him? I have a phone number in the queue as well.
Okay, yeah, let's do that.
Okay, so the next person in the queue is phone number ending in 3706. I see that you are unmuted. If you can please go ahead.
Yes, are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please go ahead.
Okay. This is Matthew Becker. I was not able to connect through the computer. I live in Rose Point Park. My address is 1211 Bedford. I am directly behind the applicant's house. I did not receive any notice from the city, so I believe this is my only opportunity to make some input. Okay, so I was approached two and a half months ago on the 13th of August by Mr. Tepper with a letter asking that I sign it, please. I had some serious concerns about the scope of his work and how it might impact my property. So I have not heard back from him on any of the concerns and I have not received any answers, so I'll just go with it. Basically, if this goes forward, he'll be allowed to erect a multi-story building, essentially a wall directly to the rear of my property line. Basically, the entire addition minus that, that fifth garage is behind my property. I'm a professional forester, also a bird watcher and amateur astronomer. I currently have a full view of the surrounding trees and also the night sky. A building this close would entirely eliminate my enjoyment of the backyard space and will effectively erect a multi-story wall, which will directly conflict with the enjoyment of the established lines of sight that I have. I am also concerned about an already problematic flooding issue that arises from their built-up landscaping, which has chronically affected my four-car garage. An increase in the impervious surface may only make the matters worse. Finally, I'm concerned about having their bathroom, kitchen, bedroom windows directly in the line of sight of my second floor and my second portico floor porch and the central hallway at such a close range. I bought my house from the city because of the views, the open space and the peace and the privacy that affords it, and I do not believe that an addition, which is in effect as large as my existing structure, is appropriate in such a neighborhood. That's all I have to say. Do you have any questions?
Okay, thank you. Do we have anybody else in the queue?
Yeah.
Mayor Danner, I believe that the only person in the queue at this time is actually the requester.
Okay, fine. Does the Requestor like to make some comments before we go open it for council questions?
Yeah, I think since I reviewed the original layout with Mr. Becker, I have had to modify that design due to the easement on, on the, on the property line. DT requires me to be 19 feet off of the, the property line. I think the original layout I showed Matt was like seven feet, so it's significantly farther away from the property line than it was that I showed him.
Okay, thank you. Let's open it up to council questions or comments at this time and then, then that will lead into the opportunity to have a motion. Counsel, who wants to go first? Right of a hand? Councilmember Relon?
Yeah, my, my first question is to council or maybe, maybe administration, why didn't this go to planning commission first?
I think that, well, the city attorney could handle that, but the, but this is the normal process for variances. The variance for a homeowner's request typically goes through our building department. If a variance is identified as required, then it goes to the zoning board of appeals per, per our charter. So this is following the, the normal process. Planning commission usually only weighs in on, on, on large projects that are, you know, impactful in a, in a broader sense.
Okay, so I'm wondering why, why this homeowner came to us first, whereas the Art Center completely circumvented?
Because it's the, it's the scale and, and the nature of the project. This always would come to the zone, a, a variance request like this would always come to the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, so I'm, I'm still, I'm still confused about why the Art Center didn't come to us for the same kind of vote.
Well, that's, let's, let's deal with that separately.
Can I address something real quick?
Sure.
When, when you say come to us, you're, you're not right now sitting as city council. You're sitting as the zoning.
Yes, yeah, I understand, but it should, still should have came to us first.
Well, that's, that's a separate issue. Let's focus on the variances that's, that's at hand.
Okay. Yeah, I have, I have just three comments real quick. I appreciate the, the amount of drawings that they sent to us. Again, I wish the Art Center would have done the same thing. We have four full-scale drawings that were delivered to each of us, which is fantastic. Our zoning ordinances need to be updated to address this multi-generational impact that's going to be coming towards us. So I'm not sure, I'm, I think the city council needs to address that as well on the ordinance committee to update our ordinances to, to allow for certain buildings to be built out, maybe not to this scale, but I, it's obvious from the drawings that this, this, the construction is way too close to the sidewalk. I think there must be a minimum, a minimum distance from the sidewalk in Kirchville that needs to be had, and that's all due to that extra garage there.
Excuse me, councilmember, this is Richard Tepper. Yeah, that, that dimension I have at the, where the garage location is, that is based on a, there's another house that's on Audubon, so I didn't exceed the, the distance that that dwelling is from the, from the street. So I tried to respect the same, you know.
Okay. I appreciate that. And then I know we have an ordinance about the amount of land that can be occupied. I think it's 35% of your land can be occupied by building. I'm not, I, I didn't see any of that stat on this.
Yeah, there's a calculation on one of the sheets there. It shows 28 and a half percent.
Okay.
And then one of the, one of the comment I want to make, my existing house as it is, is, you know, built in 26 and it doesn't meet the current setback requirements. So somewhere along the line there were changed, you know, so.
Okay, thank you. Yep. That's all I had.
Anyone else have a question? Councilmember Reed?
Well, this is more of a question for our city attorney. If he could explain to us, I think as a new council, this, I believe is our first time we're acting as the zoning board of appeals, what the process is, what our role is, and what the consequences of our decision are, next steps.
Sure. Thank you, councilmember Reed. So tonight, this is a, a public hearing on a request for a variance because the proposed development does not fit within our zoning requirements. And so typically, not typically, there are two separate kinds of variance that can be requested. The first is a non-use variance, which in this instance would be the fact that it does not comport with our dimension requirements in our zoning code. The second type of variance is a use variance. In here, I think there is a question whether or not this is, would require a use variance as well because of this issue of potentially creating two separate residents on a single-family zoned property. So in other words, while this particular use is designed to, to service or, or house the applicant's parents, in the future, it would be violative of the zoning if it were rented out or, you know, used as a duplex or something like that. That, that site is not zoned for that. So when you look at the two different variances, there, there are different requirements that should be applied to help you determine if a variance is, you know, required or, or should be granted. When you're talking about a non-use, that's a little bit less restrictive. The council should be, or the, I'm sorry, the ZBA should be looking at the unreasonable impact or burden on the property to see if the property or the issue that requires the variance is self-imposed and whether or not the relief granted, in other words, granting the variance would impact the safety, welfare, character of the neighborhood. If you're looking at a use variance, which again, I think this comes very close, if not crosses that line, the questions are, is this a reasonable use? Again, you look at, is the reason the variance is required, is it something that's unique to this property? In other words, you could do this anywhere else, but here, there's a reason you can't do it. You would look at, is, is the use essential to the character or, or fit within the essential character of the area? And again, the same qualification of not being self-created. And, and what that means is, you know, is this a, a variance that's required because of something that had happened in the past, a lot split or some other government action that now in order to, to feasibly use the property, a variance would be required. So tho, those are sort of the standards to apply to the request for a variance. So the job of the zoning board tonight is to listen as they have and then to render a decision on the request for the variance. If the request is denied, that's a final decision and that then would mean that the next step for the applicant would be an appeal to the circuit court if they took it to that next level. But that is a final decision. There's no further council involvement or anything like that. The zoning board sits in judgment of the request for the variance.
City, city attorney, could you clarify one point that you didn't touch on? I believe that for certain types of variance, a hardship is required if it's to be granted or there should be.
Hardship, yeah, the hard, all of those different factors that I described are the hardships that are applied or, or looked at in the context of the owner or the applicant. And so what you're evaluating is, does, for example, is it self-imposed? Is the hardship of not being able to utilize the property in a certain way, is that hardship self-imposed such that a variance should be granted? Or again, is it an unreasonable impact or, or burden? Again, those are all looked at through this prism of a hardship on, on the property. And it's not hardship in the sense of somebody wants to build something or, or is requesting a variance and, and just doesn't have it. It's sort of a more focused lens than that.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Reed did that cover, which I think that was your question. Okay, Mayor Protem?
Thank you, mayor. By the way, I have a technical glitch. I can't see anybody. I've lost my video.
We can see you.
Good, good. Question for Mr. Tepper. You are supposed to demonstrate a hardship. Would you speak to that, please?
Yeah, you know, currently my, my parents, I think I mentioned, they have some, you know, medical conditions that they're, they're challenged with and to actually move them into my house, it's just not doable because I have stairways, I don't have a downstairs living space for them. I don't have a downstairs living space for them. Now, the only, the only solution that I have is to build on addition. And unfortunately, because I'm on a corner as well, the variance is, it treats the side and the front yard as the same. It doesn't treat the backyard typically of a center lot or something like that. So I have to have thirty feet, but I'm asking for nineteen. Anyways, that's basically my hardship. I have nowhere else to put my parents, to care for them, give them some a place of dignity that they can reside in privacy and whatnot. That's why I wanted to provide them a kitchen garage, just like it's their own space.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you. Councilmember Hodges?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question for the city attorney. It's my understanding that the courts are generally quite strict on these matters and have a high bar of expectation in terms of meeting the hardship threshold and other general decision-making factors that one would go through in determining if a variance is appropriate.
I think that's a fair analysis. And again, you know, the hardship factor is not viewed through the prism of the personal hardship of the applicant, but more, you know, a hardship of having property that is essentially unusable for its purpose without the variance. And so in this instance, maybe an easier way to say it is this is a property that's zoned, single-family residence. You know, if it doesn't meet the current setbacks, it's certainly grandfathered in if they've been changed. So it's being used in the fashion that the zoning code contemplates. And so, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't, I would say in my professional opinion, it does not fit the requirements of the hardships that would normally be required by the court. In fact, you know, it sounds very harsh and I understand that, but courts have actually weighed in on the exact question of, you know, personal hardships with redesigning or remodeling a home to accommodate. In this particular case, and actually involved Gross Point Farms, a special needs child. And the court came to the conclusion that that's not the kind of hardship that granting a variance, that is required, that would require the granting of a variance.
So another way to say it, you know, and really explain that it's really the physical condition that you're basing the decision on it. Maybe it's a triangle-shaped lot when all of the neighbor, the neighborhood generally was rectangular shaped. So there was a physical hardship that disabled the ability to do what other nearby properties might be able to do.
So that's a fair example, or if for some reason you were going to build residential on a lot, zoned residential, but you couldn't build a home on there for whatever reason with basement issues or what. So you might be able to get a variance in that instance so that you could put your property to some use, even though it did not comport with the zoning.
Well, and I know another measure to look at is if there's been, and Councilmember Rowland's point, you know, you really just need to change the law then to provide for it rather than giving variances. So I think that's something we should consider looking forward or once staff has a sense of where this stands. So is it fair to conclude then? Mr. Hallid, I think you just answered at least part of the question, but I would assume Mr. Seisland and his building department team may want to weigh in too that the staff recommendation is to deny.
That I believe, I can let Mr. Seisland answer that question, but the materials I've seen, the staff recommendation was to deny. My legal opinion is that denial would be supported by the law.
And Councilmember Hodges, yes, building official Supa and I would recommend a denial of the variance request due to that setback.
Is there a particular setback that I can, you know, is there something I can negotiate? Is there something that, because the only issue with the corner lot that I have, it treats the side of my house and the front of my house the same way. It requires thirty feet in both directions. If you look at the drawing, we're normally, I wouldn't have that requirement.
Okay.
Just to that point real quick, if I could, Mr. Mayor, just to make sure everybody, since this is, I think, our first ZBA hearing, variances can be granted with conditions as well. That is something that is permitted by law.
Okay. Councilmember Hodges, you had follow-up?
To finish my thought, Mr. Rams, I just wanted to thank the applicant for his desire to invest in the community. And I'm not sure how this is going to go tonight, but certainly hope that if not there, that there are options available in Gross Point Park. So we can continue to have them as residents and, you know, obviously good people who want to care for their parents. So I hope there are options that allow that to happen.
Okay, thank you. I had, okay, I'll defer and go a little bit later. I don't think we've heard from Councilmember Rowland.
Oh, yeah, I did. I did speak once, but I just, I just want to reiterate what Councilmember Hodges says. I appreciate your hardship, Mr. Tepper and Mrs. Dr. Tepper. But in line with our residential ordinances and impact to our neighbors, it's going to be hard to approve this. I hope you can redesign to accomplish trying to make your parents' lives still wonderful here. But it looks like you're going to have to come up with a redesign that falls into our ordinances. And maybe someone from the city can work with you to get to that design. Thanks.
Yeah, my, my comment is similar to the last two. But I also wanted to say, my, my, a significant concern I've got with the design is that a, an objective review of the plans would tell you that we're basically looking at a duplex. And, you know, regardless of what the intended immediate use is, it essentially establishes a duplex in a single-family residential neighborhood. And that, to me, is a very significant departure from the zoning of this neighborhood. And I think that you can see that several of us have concerns. There may be a way to design an addition that doesn't establish what is effectively a duplex that's more integrated with your home. I don't know. But that, that along with the setbacks leads me to not be favorable towards the variance. Councilmember Reed?
Yeah, I join in the comments of everyone who's spoken. Really, I am concerned about making a multifamily house in a, in a single-family zone. Because of the age of the housing stock in our community, you know, the majority of the houses don't have first floor bedrooms. So I think we would be setting a precedent, agreeing with the one neighbor, Ms. Nelson, who raised those concerns, as well as the neighbor behind you, concerns about the proximity to his property. And I'm just concerned about setting the precedent because, and I do very much appreciate the drawings and the little detail that you gave us, as well as the, the maintenance of your home. It's a prominent home. I think most of us are familiar with it. And I applaud you for the level to which you've maintained it. But though, I do have concerns about granting this variance for those reasons.
Okay, I think it's time that we get a motion on the floor. I will, given the discussion, I will move that we deny this variance. Is there support?
No support.
Mayor Protem, is there just further discussion? I think we, I'll make a couple of comments just in closing. I think, Mr. Tepper, you know which way this is going to go. I do want to echo the other comments of council that I truly appreciate the way that you've maintained your home and your willingness to continue to invest in our city and to continue to make it a great place to live. And I also commend you for trying to find a solution for your parents. I've been down that road myself a few times and, you know, it's always a difficult problem. But I'd ask you to try to find another solution that doesn't present quite as much of a problem to our zoning situation. So with that, if there's any other, if there's no other further comment, I'll call a question. Councilmember Reed?
To invoke former council member Dan Clark, a yes is a no.
A yes is a no. Thank you. I was, you know, I missed that because for both of you that weren't on council with former Mayor Protem Clark, when we got to one of these, just like that, he always made that clarification. So thank you.
So, excuse me, help me out though. We're, you know, I spent several thousand dollars in architectural fees and I understand this doesn't, you know, meet the requirements. But, you know, I guess how far do I continue to go with different design iterations? Because no matter what I do, I'm going to require some kind of variance because as you can tell, the house doesn't meet the requirements as it is. So I'm going to definitely need a variance.
I would, yeah, I would suggest that you meet with the building department and look at potential solutions. And then before you invest in, you know, conceptual solutions, before you invest a lot more in it, I would entertain an amendment to the motion if council wanted to put it forward. It's not a lot, but we could move to refund your application fee.
I'll support the amendment.
Okay, I, I put the amendment on the floor. We have support from Councilmember Reed. So with that, with that amendment, I think we can call the question as the zoning board of appeals. Is that, did I lose track of the sequence here, city attorney? Or can we call the question now or we need to do it in pieces?
No, I think you can call a question now.
Okay, we'll call the question then. So a yes is a no, is a vote to deny the variance. Kirk Blayhut, please call the roll.
Councilmember Rayland?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Fluit?
Sorry, yes.
And Mayor Danner?
Yes, the motion passes, the variance request is denied. Again, thank you, Mr. Tepper, for, for going through the process and being faithful to the process and in the quality of the, of the material that you did present to us. That is truly appreciated. So, thank you. With that, that closes the session of the zoning board of appeals. And we'll move on to the next item of business, which is the Parks and Recreation Commission bylaws. And I will ask the administration, the city manager, to introduce this topic.
Thank you, Mayor Danner. So council, before each night, we have a draft of recreation commission bylaws. You know, for quite some time, I believe some members of council could correct me, but the recreation commission has not voted, nor do they, I think, have a set of guidelines and/or rules that they can look to, you know, for precedent in regards to any discussion that becomes, comes before the recreation commission. Most glaring example probably was at the recreation commission's last meeting with the dog park. So, you know, we thought about it more and I know it definitely came as suggestions of council member Reed, who is on the recreation commission. Myself and Chad Craig have certainly talked about this, that we need to set a, set of bylaws for this commission moving forward. And I think that would help set good guidelines and good government for this group because there's going to be a lot going on with there, including, you know, the marina as the marina subcommittee is being formed. So it's essentially very important. So you have before you review is these bylaws, which will assist the recreation commission with rules and principles that should define its governing structure, including voting members, terms, meetings, committees. And so I would ask city council to approve a recommendation, the commission for a bylaws. And that's it.
Mr. Seisland?
Well, the city attorney wants to comment.
Yeah, if I could, one thing we caught after this went to press, so to speak, is that it's inconsistent with the city ordinance that governs the planning commission. And so I would suggest that the approval.
Recreation Commission.
I'm sorry, the recreation commission, that the approval would be contingent, as it were, on amending that ordinance as it relates to the membership numbers. It's the same issue, that's why I said it, the same issue we have with the planning commission where both those ordinances need to be changed so that we create an imbalance and uneven number of voting members.
Okay, so you would bring that forward to, at our next meeting with that ordinance amendment for council to consider?
That would, that should be an easy fix for both the planning commission and the recreation commission.
Okay, thank you. With that, I would, I'm sorry, entertain a motion so we can further the discussion. Councilmember Reed?
I move approval of the recreation commission restated bylaws.
I believe Councilmember Fluit got in there for the, for the support discussion. Councilmember Reed?
Yeah, several items. And some of these are just clarification or cleanup under section two, membership, paragraph A six. It says resident member shall serve for three-year terms with terms ending on the three-year anniversary of appointment. The ordinance actually has terms ending on December thirty-first. So I didn't see anywhere in the bylaws that we accounted for partial terms. And I can't recall if the ordinance does. I believe it does. In the case of a vacancy, so I don't think we need to address partial terms, but I think that paragraph six should have with terms ending on December thirty-first. And then on page, under meetings, this would be paragraph H. Paragraphs one and two talk about ex parte contact. I think we need to define that as a lawyer. I know what that means. But I don't think for, I don't think it has the same meaning for commissioner. So it talks about matters of administrative decisions. So for example, I envision they're going to be discussing something about the marina and it becomes known by the agenda. I expect interested residents may talk to a member of the commission about their thoughts about what's coming before them. And that's going to happen in a community like this. So I'm not sure what X, what we mean by ex parte communications and what we're prohibiting there. Does anyone want to clarify?
Yeah, I, I think the intent there, and maybe it's a little bit overstated. And we certainly can adjust the language is just for purposes of transparency and everything else, avoiding any kind of implication of impropriety where, sure, people might have a discussion. But I think what we'd want to avoid is a situation where somebody in the community with a boat sees on an agenda that there's an issue about the marina and seeks out somebody from the recreation commission, you know, to essentially attempt to influence a vote or, or present something to them in a way that maybe is at least something that everybody else should be aware of that that contact was made. So we certainly can clarify that, but that was the intent behind it.
Okay, I mean, I kind of understood it. I expect that sort of thing happens all the time, as well as it happens with city council residents contacting us about issues on the agenda. But our deliberation on those items have to be in an open meeting. So a couple more things. In section four, and a couple of paragraphs C, D, and also in section seven, it refers to the act. And the only time act is mentioned in these bylaws is open meetings act. So I'm thinking that should be ordinance, we're referring to the powers under the ordinance?
I think that's correct.
Okay, and then also, this would be paragraph, also under section four, officers, the secretary's duties, which is E, in paragraph three. The secretary is directed to draft the minutes and shall have them spread in suitable volumes.
Oh, yeah, I don't know where that came from.
I'm not even sure what that means.
Yeah, that might have come over as language from something else, but we can delete that.
Okay, and then the final thing is under sections five and seven, there's a paragraph A, but no B. So stylistically, we should take the A out.
Yep.
And that's it.
Okay, I had, I had one thing while we're, we're talking about, about clarification. In the, in the beginning, name and purpose, one B refers to the recreation commission as is defined and authorized by ordinance two-one-three. I think it'd be useful in the bylaws to do, to use some of the language, repeat a little bit of the language that's in the ordinance and define it as an advisory committee to council as defined in ordinance two-one-three. I think that that's, that language actually is in the ordinance and it'd be useful to have in the introduction.
Okay.
Councilmember Robson?
Thank you, Mayor. Going back to part four, officers, A selections. It states at the regularly scheduled meeting of each year, the recreation commission shall select from its membership a chair, vice chair and secretary. Should that not read at the first regular scheduled meeting? They meet four times a year. So which one are they talking about?
Yeah, we can add first for clarity.
Yeah, it should be the first.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? I mean, I guess I've got a sort of an open question for sense of council during this discussion. Do we want to try and approve these with the with the modifications that were discussed and leave it to the city attorney to to execute the changes per our intent? Or did you want to have the city attorney make the changes and bring us back, bring it back to us in November? I don't know what sense of council would be. We could table it, or we could could vote on it and rely on the city attorney to make those changes. Councilmember Reed?
Offhand, I know the the Parks and Rec Commission or the Recreation Commission is scheduled to meet in November. Mr. Seisland, do you know the date of that meeting? Is it after our next meeting? Let's see, I'm pulling the calendar up right now.
Yeah, I was gonna say maybe.
Yeah.
I have, no, I have it on the fourth. I have it, I have it on the fourth.
Oh, it's before us.
So that would be before our next meeting. So if we want to be able to have this for them as approved, we would probably have to vote on it and trust the city attorney to make the changes that we've identified. I'm comfortable with that, but I want to make sure council is.
I'm comfortable with that. I think the only, excuse me for just jumping in there. It's just that ex parte con- contact that really, I think, was more of a substantive concern.
Do we, then, then would it be the, you know, I'm, I'm open to the thoughts, you know, I I think the intent, maybe not well stated, is there, but it also, for the Planning Commission, maybe it's not as necessary as it is in some of our other.
Recreation Commission.
I think this was probably amalgamation of some different.
It may, it may be appropriate just to strike it.
That's, I I'm, my point is I'm comfortable striking it if that's something that the council would like to see.
I'd be comfortable striking the whole section, because it'll be difficult to explain to a commissioner. I don't believe there's any likely, very much likelihood of any harm or foul in this area.
As an advisory committee, it's far less important in these bylaws than in some of the other ones, correct?
Yeah.
I agree.
You, would you agree with that, Councilmember Reed? You raised the issue.
Yes, yes.
You'd be okay with that? Okay, that'd be the simple solution, okay. Okay, we, anybody else? We've got some changes that I know that we've kept track of. Most of them are pretty straightforward, and particularly now that we've decided to strike that last one. And so I would, we have, should we amend the motion in some way or just vote on the, on the mention, motion on floor? I I think perhaps we should say amend the motion to state inclusive of the changes which were recommended by council in this meeting.
I'll support.
Okay. Actually, you were the, you, I think, moved to begin.
It was my motion.
If you can accept that as a change to the original motion, we won't have to vote on it as amendment.
I accept.
Councilmember Flue supported it. If you would support that as a change to the original motion, then we can do it all in one vote.
I do.
Okay, very good. I think we, I think we've got a motion to the, to adopt the bylaws as presented with the changes that were identified by council for for inclusion by the city attorney. Councilmember Reed?
Yeah, I just, two more quick things. One is the city website refers to this as the Parks and Recreation Commission. So for consistency by ordinance and now the bylaws, it's the Recreation Commission. And then for this commission and for the other boards and commissions, if we can post the bylaws to the city website for the commissions along with the other documents that we have and the council code of conduct while I'm at it, just that's one-stop shopping for us and easier than keeping track of paper.
I think that's a good idea. Okay, I can see the city manager is taking notes and is going to execute on that. Okay, with that, we're ready to call the question? Kirk Blayhut, please call the roll.
Councilmember Rayland?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
Hedges?
Yes.
Flue?
Yes.
And Mayor Denner?
Yes, motion passes. We have restated bylaws of the Recreation Commission. Thank you. That was a good discussion, and I appreciate the substantive nature of it. Thank you. The next item on the agenda are commission and board appointments. We have just a few that we want to deal with. I will introduce that. There are, there's an appointment for the Planning Commission. I'm sorry, we'll do what the DDA first, one for the DDA, one for the Planning Commission, and three for the newly established Ethics Board. For the DDA, I recommend Lena Carlisle for reappointment to the DDA. Council considered this a reappointment in, at the September council meeting and declined to approve the appointment. It was stated that Ms. Carlisle had submitted only a brief bio and not completed an application. Ms. Carlisle has submitted an application, which is now before you. This position on the DDA must be filled by someone with an interest in in property in the district to satisfy the statutory requirement of at least half of the board. Lena is a resident of the Park, Park, I'm sorry, Park Point condominiums at Jefferson and Lake Point, and therefore satisfies this requirement. Further, she's a financial professional. I move that Lena Carlisle be reappointed to the Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term expiring in 2024. Sir's support?
Support.
Discussion. Councilmember Reed?
Yeah, I think, you know, my issue the last time at our last meeting was that she had not completed an application, so, you know, that was a technical deficiency she has now. And my understanding is that of the pool of applicants, there were no others with property interest in the district. Is that correct?
That is correct, best of my knowledge.
Okay, and my, my only other concern, and I voiced this at our like, our last meeting as well, is that Ms. Carlisle serves on the Board of Review, and I know that term, I believe her term is ending in December.
Actually, it does not. I misspoke at the last meeting. I think her term runs into 2021.
Okay. That, that's just a general concern I have, because we do have quite a few residents applying to serve on our boards and commissions, so I'm not in favor of one resident taking two seats. It sounds like we have very little option, considering what the statute requires for the DDA and our pool of applicants. But that's just sort of my nudge for the next round of applications and the net.
Yeah, I, I, I appreciate that, that comment, and I agree with you that we we need, in order to satisfy the requirements of the DDA, I think we should move ahead with this disappointment. And so I think when terms end, that that should be a consideration in the future, I would agree. Any other discussion? Councilmember Rayland?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would Lena's appointment start right away?
She's already in the, she, she already holds this position.
It's just reappointment.
So it's a reappointment and and under the turn, under our terms, she continues in that until we appoint somebody else anyway.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's perfect. Thank you.
No discontinuity. Anybody else? Okay, let's call a question. Kirk Blayhut, please call the roll.
Councilmember Rayland?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Robson?
Yes.
Hedges?
Yes.
Flue?
Yes.
And Mayor Denner?
Yes, motion passes. Lena Carlisle has been reappointed to the DDA. Thank you, council. Next is the Planning Commission. And Jimmy Soros, who was also discussed in the last meeting. I recommend the appointment of Jimmy Soros to the Planning Commission. Council did consider this appointment at the September council meeting and declined to approve the appointment. One concern was that Mr. Soros had submitted his application on the old form one day before the new form was available. Also, members of council were somewhat unfamiliar with Mr. Soros. Mr. Soros has resubmitted his updated application on the new form and provided additional information on his qualifications and interests. He's also met with several members of council and was encouraged to reapply. Mr. Soros would fill the commission position currently held by Michael Fickiny. Mr. Soros is a real estate broker and is currently a lead in operating Soros Real Estate with their office on Mac and Kadju. He also has extensive investments in both residential and commercial properties, many of which are in Gross Pointe Park. He's a graduate of Brown University and is raising a young family in the city. I believe he will bring valuable insight to the Planning Commission, both from the perspective of his professional expertise, as well as that of a young family. I believe that this will be beneficial to our master planning process, which is being supported by the firm of MKSK Team with Quinn Evans. I move that Jimmy Soros be appointed to the Planning Commission for a three-year term ending in 2023. Sir's support?
Support.
Discussion. Councilmember Flue?
Um, I have a couple of questions. I actually have a question for the city attorney first. I did talk to Mr. Soros. I explained to him what my issue was with his appointment. I would disagree that we voted against him based on the date of his application, because I know we looked it up while we were sitting here, which is one of the nice things of doing this from home.
Well, I just said that was one concern. I I didn't try to say that was the reason. I'm sorry.
Okay, I certainly, I did check it. I, that was something that I wanted to verify for myself, because it would have mattered to me whether he made that deadline, and he did while we were using the old application. So he submitted the new application. However, my question for the city attorney is, to me, this is a revote on something that we have already voted on. His application, his initial application was valid at the time that he submitted it and at the time that we voted. We voted no for various reasons. So we're back again. We're basically in the same position we were in before to revote on the same appointment. I'm fairly certain that we can't revote on any city issue, because we don't like the outcome of the vote. So can you speak to that, please?
I would have, to me, it's a slightly different circumstance when you're talking about an appointment. In our charter, it gives the mayor the power of appointment and then the council the power to confirm. I don't specifically know offhand if, as an appointment, it fits within some kind of legal preclusion from a revote on that. I just, I do not know the answer to that offhand.
Okay, because it seems to me we're voting on something that we already voted on, and there ha, there hasn't been nothing, no circumstances have changed between now and then. And then my other question to you, Mayor Denner, is what is your aversion to appointing someone who is a planner? Because I'm coming right back to the point that I made before, and I told Mr. Soros it had nothing to do with him. In fact, I encouraged him to apply for TIFA or the open council seat. We have four applications from certified planners. I would vote yes on any one of those people, and I don't understand why you won't appoint one of them.
Okay. Well, I won't, I, I, I'm not going to say that I won't appoint one of them, but I would, I have before you the appointment for, for Mr. Soros. Mr. Soros resubmitted his application and reached out to me and asked that he be reconsidered by council, largely because of the encouragement he got from at least some members of council that he, that he met with. He felt that, that his application would be viewed differently after those meetings than it was the first time around, and he, and he asked that I consider resubmitting his application. I continue to agree that he would be very valuable on the Planning Commission. That's not to exclude that a planner might be valuable as well. I believe that, but I believe that he, the combination of his professional expertise, investment in the community, and his generational perspective is going to be really valuable on the master plan process. We did, another reason why I'm comfortable, at least for this appointment, not going beyond what planning familiarity we have on the, on the commission with Commissioner Goodwin and Commissioner Sam Pierre, which I know are not certified planners, but I'm saying planning familiarity. We did just, the Planning Commission did just approve the hiring of a top-notch professional firm of planners to assist them. And I'm confident that the planning expertise that's going to be brought to bear in this next, in this process over the next year by MKSK will be more than adequate in terms of planning expertise. In the absence of a planning process and that kind of support, you know, perhaps there'd be other considerations, but I feel strongly that we've got professional expertise on board now with our outside consultants and that the perspectives that Mr. Soros would bring to the process so will serve our city very well for a long time.
I, I think that's an excellent point, that we're in the middle of the master pan, plan process, and we're going to do it with no local planners on our, on our, on our Planning Commission.
Okay, other comments? Point, point, I understand your point. Councilmember Rayland?
Yeah, I have a, I have no problem with Mr. Soros's character. I do, I do stick to my, my, my thoughts as we need a, we need a certified master, certified planner on this team. If it wasn't for the residents that stepped up to indicate how bad our master plan was and out of date it is, we wouldn't be getting this master plan redo in 2020, 2021. So I do feel that we need that power to run this through the gamut, to make sure it's as, as, as high level as we can get it. I don't see a real estate agent adding that value to this, to this process, and that, that master plan needs to be our number one priority. As, as, as Mr. Tepper would say, you know, we, we need some senior, senior living options. We need to use our property as needed. The Art Center was a prime land to build some senior living, and we missed out on that. And so that, that's going to have to be my, my disagreement with this appointment. Thank you.
Further discussion? Councilmember Reed?
Yes. I met with Mr. Soros, and we had a great conversation. As far as, you know, his professional qualifications, I have no qualms about them. I did encourage him to stay involved. I did not really expect for his application to come back through at our next meeting, because I think the council was pretty emphatic in rejecting him at that time. Although I do believe there will be additional openings on the Planning Commission, as we've discussed, and as our city attorney revises those ordinances. You know, we do need young voices, but as an adult, he's lived here, you know, for the last four years, and we've had residents who've, who've stepped up and have had their applications on file. And I do have a concern with that. I have a concern that we overlook our residents who come to these meetings, who put their applications in and seek to serve. Instead, we are seeking people outside of that application process, which we put into place. So, you know, I'm, you know, I like Mr. Soros very much, and I hope he stays involved, but I have a hard time supporting his application at this time, considering we just rejected it a month ago. And I, and I agree with Councilmember Flue. I did initially raise a concern at the last meeting about the form of his application, and Mr. Seisland said that was the form that was in effect when he applied. And it was really, again, that was a technical issue. And once it was resolved at the meeting, I didn't have an issue with his application in terms of following our rules at the time. So I, I really would like to find, I mean, I've, before our last meeting, I've supported every person that you've put forward. I think it's really important for us to have that unanimous support for your appointments. I really would like to do that, and I, I don't feel we're getting that at this point. So, you know, I, I, I'm really encouraging putting forward a candidate that the six of us can support.
Okay, any other comments? Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I do respect the points of view of my colleagues. My own view is that when a mayor makes a nomination, it's in the charter, and he makes nominations through the committee or a commission. Absent that that person he nominates is unqualified or incompetent, I think that person should be approved. Mr. Soros is qualified. He'll be replacing another. Mr. Soros is qualified. He'll be replacing another person with real estate expertise. He should not be voted down, because we think, uh, other people who have applied should be appointed. I think that's a discussion, uh, between council member and the mayor to support and, and make recommendations. Uh, but once the mayor has made that determination, and again, absent a strong argument that his nominee is unqualified, it's my position to support that nomination. That's what I'm going to do here.
Anybody else? Councilmember Hodges?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. Certainly, this is a challenging situation. I, I've had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Saros too, and was quite impressed with his commitment and his qualifications. I mean, quite frankly, you've got a significant bevy of, um, qualified candidates, um, that have presented their interest, which is the good news, bad news, right? And at the last meeting, we obviously made, um, as individuals, our desires known and our priorities known to you. Um, you heard that input, um, and came back to us, uh, with Mr. Saros. Um, and because he does, he's not exactly, I think, what everybody wants, um, he still falls within certain guard posts. Um, and therefore, I will support your recommendation with that in mind, um, because he's certainly not a, a bad candidate, and he believes in our community, and I think we need to encourage good leadership, um, and not discourage that, and I hope that, um, he will, you know, this will increase his stake, um, in the community. And going forward, hopefully, we can find, as Ms. Reed indicated, a consensus candidate where we're all unanimously behind that individual. But it's clear we're not there, unfortunately.
Okay. I can see we've got a split council on this as, as well. I feel strongly that Mr. Soros would be terrific on the, uh, on the commission. Um, I also have to say that I was disappointed in this council at the last meeting, uh, in that they chose not just to express a preference, but to appear to publicly bully the mayor into making a specific appointment, not even a, uh, a, a general, uh, a comment about the qualifications put forward. And I felt that was inappropriate, and I still feel that that was inappropriate. Having said that, uh, you have Mr. Saros before you again this evening. I think everybody's weighed in, uh, a little bit. I don't know if anybody else wants to say anything, but it's, I think it's time to call the question. Uh, nothing further. Uh, Clerk Bligh, please call the roll.
Councilmember Raylan?
No.
Reed?
No.
Rapsen?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Flue?
No.
And Mayor Danner?
Yes, um, the vote is three to three. Uh, motion fails, so the appointment fails. Mr. Saros is not appointed. Um, therefore, uh, under the terms of the statute, Mr. Fickney will continue, uh, in his role as a planning commissioner until such time as, uh, we successfully pass an appointment. Okay. Moving on. Let's go to the, uh, Board of Ethics.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Ask one question about, um, when do we intend to have the Ethics Board start?
That, that actually will be discussed in, in, in this, the, um, we, we left the specific dates off in the ordinance that we, um, that we adopted pending, uh, the, um, the appointment of the, of the board. And, uh, after consulting with the city attorney, um, it was felt that the best thing to do would be, uh, once with the appointment of the board, that would establish the anniversary date for those, for those members. So assuming that we appoint the board, uh, tonight, uh, then the, um, the anniversary would be October 31st, uh, of, of any given year, uh, for when a term ends, and therefore November 1st, uh, when a, uh, term begins.
Okay, I'm, I'm ass- I'm asking because I think this is going to be a long discussion as well. And I'm wonder, I'm wondering if we table it until December, when we have a little less to talk about.
I don't know. We may have more to talk about. I don't know. Well, let me, let me, let's, let's, let's make an attempt at this, because I think we've got some really good candidates here.
Thank you.
First of all, a little preamble on the Board of Ethics. Uh, City Council recently established, uh, a new ethics ordinance, uh, which supplemented existing, uh, language on ethical conduct in the city's code. The new ordinance calls for establishing a three-member resident Board of Ethics, plus the ex officio non-voting membership of the city attorney. Uh, the board members are appointed by the mayor, subject to council confirmation, to three-year staggered terms, so that one board member, member's term expires each year. Uh, the Board of Ethics is an, uh, is an advisory board of the city council, and is responsible for conducting hearings on ethical matters concerning city employees and public officials brought to their attention, and rendering advisory opinions to city council for possible action. The ordinance states that, and I quote, "The Board of Ethics shall be made up of residents of the city who have legal, administrative, or other desirable qualifications," end quote. Uh, to initiate the board, um, I will appoint first, uh, three member, three members, the first three members to stagger terms of three years, two years, and one year. Many applications were received for these positions, I have to admit, and that, uh, and many were qualified. In selecting the three that I'm recommending, uh, I considered a number of factors. Uh, I considered their personal qualifications, their professional qualifications, and importantly to me, their accomplishments over a sustained career. I believe since, uh, there's an element of, uh, a sense almost of judiciary in, in this role, uh, the, the wisdom that comes with, uh, sustained accomplishments over a career should be important in whoever, uh, holds these, uh, these roles. Uh, the three individuals I'm recommending all have exceptional resumes and are viewed as individuals of the highest character. So with that, I would like to move into, uh, each of the three, uh, appointees, which, uh, we should deal with one at a time. The first appointee is, uh, Lawrence Mann. For the three-year term, I recommend Lawrence Mann. Mr. Mann is a lawyer and retired as managing partner of Bowman and Brook. He, he also is retired from the Wayne State, uh, Law School, where he was an associate professor, and more recently also served in administrative roles. As a lawyer, he has confronted ethic, ethics-related issues. He has, has also published articles and presented in various legal forums. I believe he may be in attendance tonight. I'm not sure. Um, we, could I, uh, have him identify himself if you would like? But I move that Lawrence Mann be appointed to the Board of Ethics for a three-year term, ending October 31st, 2023. Is there support?
Support.
Okay, there is support. Discussion. Councilmember Reed?
Uh, I, I think it would be wonderful. I don't know if all of the candidates are here, but, um, this is a newly created board. We are actually creating a board to be our watchdogs for city council and city officials. Um, I don't know Mr. Mann. I, uh, he has an impressive resume. It would be nice for these residents, um, who are seeking the position to inter, to introduce themselves. And put a name to a face and/or a voice, um, and hear from them in their own words. I, when we were going through this process, I really advocated for a very open process, because this is different than the Planning Commission, the Recreation Commission. This isn't, um, you know, you're making the appointments. We have to approve them, and I think it's only fair that we are vetting the candidates. So, um, I, I would like to hear from them.
Okay, Mr. Mann, if you are present and would like to make a comment, could you, uh, use the hand raise function, and our administrator will identify you?
Um, the hand raise function?
Uh, I can hear you.
You can?
I, I can. So you have been admitted to the meeting.
Oh, good, good. Um, I've been listening from the beginning, and my first comment is you all work pretty hard. Um, I, uh, counsel, uh, person Reed, I've, uh, been in the city for almost thirty years and raised my daughter here. My, my, my wife and I were here until she passed away, and I, uh, obviously like Gross Pointe Park, so I've watched it evolve, and I'm concerned about its continued evolution, and of course, uh, a, an ethical evolution. And so it just seems to me that it's a way I could try and give back, though, uh, after this meeting, I'm, I'm, I'm questioning my reasoning. But I, I, I say that in jest. Uh, it's a serious business, and I would approach it seriously.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Um, with that, I'd like to, uh, call the question on the appointment of, uh, Lawrence Mann to the Ethics Board. Uh, Clerk Bligh, please call the roll.
Councilmember Raylan?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Rapsen?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
Flue?
Yes.
And Mayor Danner?
Yes, uh, motion passes. Uh, Lawrence Mann is now our first, uh, board member of our Ethics Board. Thank you, Larry. I really appreciate you, uh, raising your hand and being willing to, uh, to, uh, support the community in, in this role. And, um, I'm sure that, uh, as we get started here, there'll be an initial organizational meeting.
Thank you. Delighted to serve.
Thank you. Uh, next is, uh, David Breen. For the two-year term, I recommend David Breen. Uh, Mr. Breen is a CPA and retired from a senior management and board position with PricewaterhouseCoopers. He is currently board chair for Henry Ford Health Systems. He has extensive experience working with large companies, providing leadership within his firm and as a board member. As a CPA, he is bound by and well-versed in ethical considerations. He also has volunteered his time and talents to various organizations, including Cornerstones and the Autism Alliance of Michigan. He may be in attendance also as well. Uh, I move that David Breen be appointed to the Board of Ethics for a two-year term, ending October 31st, 2022. Is there support?
Support.
Okay, I think, uh, I think Councilmember Hodges may have gotten in there first. Consistent with the last time, uh, Dave, if you are in attendance, please use the hand raise function, and you can be admitted, and if you would like to make, uh, comments. Not sure if he's here. He may have had an, uh, a conflict. I wasn't sure if he was able to clear it.
Mr. Mayor, uh, he is not online.
Okay, I believe he, he must have had a conflict and was not able to clear it. With that, I'd like to call the question on the appointment of, uh, of David Breen to the Ethics Board. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Flue.
Um, I don't know if anybody else had any, any comments to make as well. Um, okay, so, Mr. Breen, and I really don't want to destroy Pachinsky, Pazinsky, I don't want to say his name incorrectly, but I might as well speak to both of them at once. Um, I looked at the ethics resumes at least three times each, and I did notice that they are all very impressive resumes, but that, uh, Mr. Mann was the only one who did actually mention ethics. Um, I'm also aware that we had other excellent, excellent resumes and applications that did speak particularly to ethics. Two of them were women, one of whom is a judge, and one of whom has served on several professional ethics boards in the past. So, and if I can back up a second, I'm sorry if you feel bullied, and I know I did mention Amy Chesterton's name when we discussed that, however, I've also mentioned a couple of times that I would accept, I would have voted happily for any of the planners that you had put forward, so it was not truly about one particular person. Coming back to ethics. So, um, as I said, there were, there were two women who had, I thought, had exceptional applications. Um, there were other applications that spoke directly to ethics. And I just, I don't know why you wouldn't choose someone who clearly has experience dealing with those types of issues. You don't have to explain all of your logic to me. I understand these are your appointments, and I understand what council member, what Mayor Protown, Robson is saying, however. I do wonder why some of these people are not being selected, and so I wanted to make a point about that. Um, one other thing that I noticed at the end of last week, after we received these applications, I started looking through, um, all of our boards and commissions, and, uh, I noticed our board of review is very balanced. I noticed that we have, um, a plethora of women on our beautification commission. But aside from those two groups out of, uh, all of our other city resident appointments, we have thirty-six men and seven women. And I think we need more women. And I am not suggesting that you appoint anyone who is not qualified. Obviously, I am looking at people's qualifications here. Uh, but I know we have good applicants who are applying, and the people who I am particularly speaking to, I think, are women who are much better qualified than the people who are being selected, and that's a high bar, because the people you are selecting, as I've said, have excellent professional backgrounds. Um, I think we need to be choosing more women.
Okay, thank you. I will, uh, just as a, a clarification, um, you wouldn't have no reason to know this, but, um, one of the applicants that you identified as a judge, um, did withdraw, uh, their nomi, their, uh, their, uh, application, uh, and asked that they not be considered. They, um, originally got verbal permission, uh, from the Judicial, uh, Tenure Commission Chair to accept this appointment, and then later that was reversed after further discussion of the, uh, commission. And so the judge asked to be, uh, to not be considered for this appointment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments before we vote on Mr. Breen? Uh, Councilmember, uh, Rowland?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I, I also am looking for some more diversity. I, I apologize if, if you felt bullied last, last meeting, but we have a planning commission that has fantastic applicants, and it seems like we're passing them up for reasons I don't know, but we need to get the best of the best on these commissions, especially people that we know have proven to be involved in the city, uh, and have already put forth time attending meetings and, and divulging their time to, to, to better, to the betterment of our city. Um, I almost feel that's a prerequisite to be appointed to anything, is you should be attending the, the city meetings, uh, to understand how we run. Um, I'm, I'm disappointed that some people don't attend meetings and then get appointed, uh, and I'm looking for more diversity as well. I'm not afraid to say that. Um, we have, we, we were voted in as a change last year, and it's our job to our residents to push for more diversity. Our city is fantastically more diverse than simply retired males. That's all I'm going to say. Uh, I, I do hope that you keep that into consideration when pushing for our appointees. Thanks.
No, I, I appreciate the comment. I also, I appreciate the comment about, uh, uh, the diversity in terms of women appointees. And I, and I, and I will point out, um, that, you know, among my most recent appointees are included, uh, uh, two women on the Planning Commission, a woman on, uh, Tifa, and a woman on, on the DDA. So, uh, I'm trying to move in, in that direction, both from a, uh, both from a gender standpoint, but also other dimensions of diversity, and I think that my appointment, record on appointments is pretty consistent there.
Thanks for, thanks for keeping that in consideration. I appreciate that. Thanks for your answer.
Uh, thanks. Uh, Councilmember Hodges?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I, I see that point and, and take it. Um, and in the attempt to achieve additional diversity, I'm looking at the pool of candidates that actually did apply, and I think it'd be tough for you to do that from that existing pool, um, given what, some of the boxes that I think everybody wants to check. So, um, I think that gives some credence to, um, the recommendations that you're making. And again, they're within some guard posts that I think are important.
Okay, I think it'd be appropriate. Sorry, Councilmember Reed?
Um, I, I looked at the applications, and I did find diversity. Um, people who are still in their careers are, you know, a large swath of our residents. So are women, so are people who are still in their forties. Um, with this particular board, uh, Mayor, and, and like I said, until our last meeting, I've supported every, every candidate that you've put forward for a commission, a board. And, you know, I expect to do that. I would like, and, and I, and I believe, um, in my three years here, those candidates have in my three years here, those candidates have all been unanimously appointed. But with this particular board, you know, we were, we are asking them to do something very different than any other board or commission, and I really think the composition should be more reflective of our city as a whole. I did see diversity in the applicants that I reviewed. I did just now learn that the judge withdrew her application. That did come as a surprise to me. But there were, there were still at least one more woman. There were people who were still on their careers. And I think that serves all of us, and it serves the city officials who would also be subject to the ethics ordinance, to have some, a broader school of thought there. I really would like to see, I mean, we, I think we were all impressed with Mr. Mann because of the ethics that he brought forward in his application. And, you know, one of our residents spoke tonight, we're basically selecting a jury. And that jury should be reflective of the community and not just one segment of the community. And, you know, I, I, you know, I don't, you know, without going back to, and I'm not suggesting, and I don't believe at our last meeting, I named any names, and I'm not suggesting any names to you tonight. But I do think we have to cast a wide net and have, if we don't have a good pool of applicants, you know, that's one thing, but we do have a good pool, and they're not all cut from the same walk of life, and that's, you know, they're all retired. So I just have some reservations there, and it's not about either one of the next two candidates. But they all just seem very similar, the both of them seem very similar in that they're retired from corporate America, and so that's, you know, I really would like for us to find these, and I'm sensing already from the, from the council members who have spoken that there's not going to be unanimous support. I'd really like to see that.
Yeah, let me share a little bit more of my logic here. I think that because this, this particular role does deal with with ethical matters, that it's important to select individuals that through their careers have, in one way or another, developed a sensitivity or experience in ethical matters. And I, and two professional categories where that's clearly the case are lawyers and CPAs. It's a requirement of their profession. And and I felt that I didn't want a board that was all lawyers or all CPAs, but I think it was useful to, in this case, when I'm thinking of, when I'm looking at Mr. Breen, is that he brings the perspective from from his professional background, which does have a strong ethical component to it. And also, he's not a sort of sit-at-home kind of retiree, and he's an enormously active person who's essentially pursuing a second career of, that looks more like volunteerism in highly important roles, like his chairmanship at Henry Ford Health Systems and the roles in his participation on boards of other organizations. So I felt that since he is the one that we were considering at this time, that he was, he's particularly well-qualified and a good complement to to Mr. Mann. So that's my argument for for Mr. Breen. Mayor Protown?
Thank you, Mayor. Lot of observations here, and I really appreciate everybody's point of view. They're quite frankly very valid. I commend Councilmember Fluet to bring my attention about the ratio of thirty-six men and seven women. So there is work to be done to get more females on different commissions and committees, and I support that. But I want to commend the mayor, too. I think we can all tell that he put some great thought in these three selections. And when he sits down to make decisions, it's been my observation that he takes everything into consideration, including diversity. I think he tried to do that again this time. Among the applicants, as previously mentioned, was a distinguished female judge. I can't say for sure, but had that judge not withdrawn her name, she might be one of the nominees tonight. What I'm trying to make is he did attempt to create a very diverse ethics commission. I think he did a fine job with it. Not to the liking of some, but the effort was there. It was one hundred percent. Diversity, I mean, we're talking, now you're talking about the younger people, the different careers. I mean, I guess we can go down that path indefinitely about diverse, diverse, diversity. The problem here, we're only talking about three positions, so how diverse can we get, folks? And the mayor, I think, tried valiantly. In this particular case, in terms of a woman on this commission, I think we're down to one woman applying. Probably a very qualified woman, but certainly I don't think we should be appointing her just because she's a woman, and we're down to one woman. And again, I would reiterate that the mayor has done a fine job, has been very thoughtful on this. And I go back to my previous position. Unless folks can demonstrate that these nominees are somehow not qualified or incompetent, I support all three of them. Thank you.
Councilmember Reed?
Yeah, one, one point that I wanted to make, and I brought this up back when we were discussing this, and that is the selection process. And that's why I'm very happy that Mr. Mann is here, and he introduced himself. But I heard from three candidates who were not selected that they were not even, they received acknowledgement from the clerk that their applications were received, but there wasn't even, they didn't even get an interview or a phone call with the mayor. And, and so I understand that the one, that the gentleman that you've selected are eminently qualified. But I think we have to have a process that's fair, especially for an ethics board, that you know, it's not just a piece of paper they filled out, but they have some type of interview and a chance to speak, if not to the council, to the mayor, about their desire to serve and their qualifications. So I'm really, I mean, I I don't want to vote against any of your, of your applicants, of your, of your nominees, but I'm really struggling with the process for this particular board specifically, because it's so important, it's important to all of us, and it's important for the residents to feel that we have, you know, you know, a good watchdog board. So and we've talked, like I said, we've talked about this previously. I do think applicants should should have some type of an interview once we're in the selection process.
To yeah, to clarify, I approach this much like I had, in the general process, like other, other appointments where I review all the applications. I study the resumes. I spend time thinking about the qualifications I'm most interested in. And you're right, I don't reach out to everyone that has put in an application. You know, this isn't supposed to be my full-time job. But I, but I do reach out to more than just the people that I appoint, that I, that I put up for appointment. I do reach out to others that I think are, are possibles that I may appoint, in order to narrow it down. And, and in this case, that's the process I went through. And, and you have the three before you. I think at this point, it'd be, it would be helpful if we called the question on Mr. Breen and then, and then moved on. Because I think we've exhausted, exhausted the discussion. I think we all agree that he would be an excellent member of the, of the Ethics Board. Whether or not everyone would have chosen someone else to be among the three is really what we're talking about. So with that, I'd ask Clerk Blayhut to call the roll for the appointment of David Breen to the Ethics Board.
Councilmember Raylan?
Yeah, I have the utmost respect for Mr. Breen, but I have to say no.
Reed?
Yes.
Rapsen?
Yes.
Hajes?
Yes.
Fluet?
No.
And Mayor Denner?
Yes. Clerk, could you, I lost, I had, I lost internet connection in the middle of that vote. Can you replay the vote so that I understand it completely?
Yes. Councilmember Raylan voted no. Reed voted yes. Rapsen voted yes. Hajes voted yes. Fluet voted no, and the mayor voted yes.
Okay, with that, we have four yeses. The motion passes. David Breen has been appointed to the Ethics Board, and I thank the council for their, for their discussion. So, moving on. My third candidate is Rick Pachinski. And I believe that's the right way to pronounce his name, after having talked to him several times. And I propose Mr. Pachinski for a one-year term. Mr. Pachinski is a lawyer and retired as in-house counsel for Masco Corporation. He's also been House Counsel for Unisys Corporation and has been an associate attorney at Miller Canfield. He developed a deep expertise in product safety responsibilities. He also has volunteered his time and talents to several organizations, including the Accounting Aid Society and Lake Shore Legal Aid. He also serves on the Board of the Detroit Goodfellows. Mr. Pachinski brings a combination of legal, legal expertise, corporate experience, and volunteerism to the Board of Ethics. I believe Mr. Pachinski is also in attendance tonight. I move that Rick Pachinski be appointed to the Board of Ethics for a one-year term, ending October 31st, 2021. Is there support?
Support.
Support from Councilmember Hodges. Rick, if you're in attendance, could you use the hand rage function so you can introduce yourself?
I have done that. Are you able to hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Thank you.
I, first of all, I want to say thank you for inviting me to, to this board, and I, I want to share the sentiment of, of Mr. Mann about how impressive these meetings are and how businesslike. I also appreciate the fact that there's this concern and understandable concern among some of the members of the council about diversity, and I'm, I'm I applaud that. I'm, as you can tell from my resume, I'm very actively involved and have been for many years. I've worked with legal aid since the eighties. I've worked with accounting aid since the nineties as a volunteer. Sometimes putting in twenty, thirty hours a week doing some of that volunteer work, because it's important to me to give back to your community. It's important to me to make this a better place for everyone. And I think that's what you're trying to accomplish with, with seeking more diversity. I am a male. There's nothing I can do about that. But I can assure you that has nothing to do with my qualifications, although I again applaud your eagerness to see a broader segment of the community involved. That's one of the things I most cherish about living in Ghost Point Park, is the diversity of this community. But in my role as an attorney for forty years, I've had to handle a number of internal investigations, many of which have involved ethical issues, as well as having been privy to a number of very sensitive corporate matters and managing that through up to the Board of Directors in certain occasions. So I would ask that you take that into account in considering me for this position.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate you, that you, that you hung in there for this, for this long meeting, and appreciate your comments. Any further discussion from council? Councilmember Relon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I thought you indicated at the beginning of these appointments, you didn't want to fill it with lawyers and CPAs. Didn't you say that?
I said that I, I wanted, I said I was attracted to the professional expertise of lawyers and CPAs, and I didn't want to have all one flavor.
Okay, but thank you, Mr. Pachinski, for, for being a part of this meeting. You sound very dedicated to the, to the cause here, and, and that's something we need with our, with our resident representatives. I am gonna have to, to say again, this is not as diverse as we need for an ethics committee. I'm also would like to bring up a new business, the, the manner in which we get these appointees. It, it's disturbing to me. I can see you're, you're well-qualified for this, but I'm still going to be pushing for the diverse, the diverse ticket, if you'd like to say. So I appreciate your, your willingness to, to submit your volunteer hours. Thank you.
Okay, other discussion? Councilmember Reed?
Thank you. Yeah, I would like to thank Mr. Pachinski as well. I really very much appreciate him taking the time to attend our meeting. I suspect he's been on here almost as long as we have, if not the entire time. I appreciate that. And I do think it's very important for us to get this board in place. I think we've been talking about it for a year or pretty close to a year. I, you know, so I'm going to support him, but I'm also strongly encouraging you, Mayor Denner, to really consider especially the statistics on women. I mean, there's three of us here. We have to be, and the census hasn't come out, but I'm gonna just go out on a limb and say we're fifty percent of the residents of Ghost Point Park. And there are many qualified women, younger people, different professions, who are seeking to be involved in city government. And so I am encouraging you to cast a wide net and to talk to these people. I know it takes time, but in the end, I find it enjoyable to get to know our residents and find out their interests and their ideas. So I will support Mr. Pachinski. I think it's important for us to get this board in place. But I think we need to be you know, respectful of those who are seeking positions in city government and of those people who give their time to these meetings and to raise their voice, you know, passionately and advocating for you know, process and ordinances and all the things that we've been experiencing for the last year, because it's been, you know, there, we've had some contentious moments. And I'd like to, you know, for us to move forward positively. So those are my comments.
Okay, thank you. You know, your comment about the, the diversity from a gender standpoint, you're right, we've got, we've got three women here on council, which I think is really good on council. I never went through the exercise that Councilmember Fluet did to count exactly the, the numbers. And I think that you came up with only seven women who have been appointed to boards and commissions. I guess I'm proud of the fact that four of those seven were appointed by me recently. And so I hope that speaks to the direction that I'm trying to take our, our, our city and our appointments. But having said that, Mayor Protown has a comment. Just quickly, a lot of great comments.
I think a lot of good has come out of this discussion, especially in terms of diversity. And I think it's important, we touched upon this tonight, about this council coming together and being less divisive. I think this is an opportunity. The message is loud and clear, there needs to be more diversity, there needs to be more women. And I think we are all working towards that goal. So that's, that's in la hoppa. But facing us right now is this particular nominee who's highly qualified. And I would think it'd be most unfortunate for him not to be approved, given his qualifications. Just moving forward from tonight, as Councilmember Reed has talked about, making our committees or commissions more diverse. I'm upbeat. I am confident we are going down that road. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Are we ready to call the question? Okay, Clerk Blayhut, please call the roll.
Councilmember Raylan?
Again, I have the ultimate respect for Mr. Pachinski, but I have to vote no.
Reed?
Yes.
Rapsen?
Yes.
Hajes?
Yes.
Fluet?
No.
And Mayor Denner?
Yes. Motion passes. Mr. Pachinski, congratulations. You are the third member of our Ethics Board. And again, I really appreciate you bringing your, your application in and, and willing to share your time and talents with our city and for with our city and for hanging in there through this, so, through this long meeting. So, welcome aboard.
Mayor?
Still here.
Could I just take a moment to thank everybody? I just see this as a really important point along the continuum of building trust, and I know this was an endeavor that I advanced as part of my campaign when pursuing a leadership position with our council. So, to see it having gotten to this point and to know all of the work that's gone into it from each of our colleagues is something I think to be celebrated as a community, and I don't want that moment to be lost. This is a very positive step toward, forward towards ensuring we have the organizational structure that advances the highest ethical standards and really gets us to a place of high function. So, thank you to everybody for that.
Yeah, I certainly second that. I guess it is, it is useful to reflect on the path that took us to this, these appointments tonight that began with the recognition that best practices would say that we should beef up our ethics ordinances and our ethics practices process. And I commend the council for calling that to our attention and in many ways, leading the charge. And I think Councilmember Hodges, you were an important part of that in the early going. And it took a while, and I commend our ordinance review committee, working with the city attorney, to come up with a really excellent ethics ordinance, I think. And we labored over that and came up with, I think, a good ordinance that we did adopt. And this now puts that ordinance into action, and I feel very good about the progress that we're making in this area. So, thank you very much. And to those that were appointed tonight, you can expect to be contacted by the city clerk and the city attorney for next steps. Okay, thank you very much. That closes the commission and board appointments and opens the next agenda item, which is council comment. Council, do you have further comments tonight? Councilmember Hodges?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just quickly, I would just like to call out the fact that we are, Red Ribbon Week is upon us. Ms. Mary Jo Harris shared with each of us in her role with CARE of Southeast Michigan, the significance of this Red Ribbon Week, which is our anti, our drug-free week, and the importance of that with the theme being to be happy, be brave, and be drug-free. And I know I have my red ribbon on tonight. I think it looks like Member Reed has hers on as well, and I'm sure the rest of you have them all ready to be broken out in the morning as well. So, just wanted to draw attention to that and to thank Ms. Harris for bringing that, excuse me, important endeavor to the table. And then also, the Gross Point Theater has been engaged in some wonderful programming, referred to as singing in the streets as their way of filling the gap created by the pandemic. And I know I haven't had an opportunity to attend a couple of those. My neighbors, the butlers and the coffees generously offered their homes for this purpose, and there've been a number of public ones as well, the next of which is on November 8th at 2:00 PM in the Village. So, I would really encourage the community to, if nothing else, enjoy that, the richness of the arts and culture that is available to you, but also to celebrate one of our local organizations. And I know during my campaign too, an important value was looking at the money that is spent on campaigns, and that's really evident at this moment because we're in, we're at the end of a very significant election cycle. And as we look at to what we invest our dollars in and what will really have a payoff, I think when we invest in our community, those dollars go much further. So, the Gross Point Theater, Red, the CARE Southeast Michigan, and others are two very good examples of that. And then lastly, we've talked off and on about doing some kind of team-building effort or an off-site for this council. We've never really had an opportunity to meet in that regard and talk about what's important to us and how we're going to work together and building that relationship. And now that we have a new council member, hopefully, coming on soon, I'm wondering, Mr. Mayor, what you would recommend as the next step to make that happen? I'm a big believer in managing for results and accountability, and in order to get it out of the discussion stage, how do, how do you recommend we advance that? Should we assign a team to vet it and figure out what form it should take and what is legally allowable or assign it to staff, or how do we move that forward so that it happens?
You brought this up several times. I would suggest that you meet with the city attorney and pursue this. Some of the obstacles that we run into have to do with the Open Meetings Act. And so, brainstorming with the city attorney, considering the act on those venues where we might come together, for example, a third-party delivered training session of some sort, you know, perhaps there's something you could do. Councilmember Reed, do you have a comment on this topic, it looks like?
Well, I mean, the MML is chock full of those training sessions, and right now, most of them are virtual, but in the past, in my prior years, we've had the opportunity to attend conventions together. That's a really great opportunity to get together as a council. I'm not sure exactly what Councilmember Hodges is suggesting a weekend away. I don't know, but.
I'm not sure that we have a.
Our time is a premium too. I think we all invest a lot here, and there are certainly resources that we've all taken advantage of through the MML. I think they're the best at that.
Yeah, I would, I would agree. I mean, in non-pandemic years, the, for example, the conference that Councilmember Lewitt just attended several sessions virtually is an outstanding opportunity to network with our fellow, with our colleagues from other cities and also in an informal way without Open Meetings Act issues and dwelling on the city issue, our own city issues, you know, get a chance to be with each other in another environment where we're focused on the broader issues of government. So, hopefully, when the pandemic clears, there are two, two of those conferences that traditionally have happened every year that attract as many of us as can get away. They tend to, they happen during work weeks, which is a challenge. The one was the one that Councilmember Lewitt just commented on, and the other is the Capitol Conference, which normally occurs in normal years, in spring, which generally includes participation of some members of the state legislature. City Manager has a comment on this, related to this, I believe.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Denner. I did just want to clarify for Councilmember Reed and Hodges. I think what Councilmember Hodges was referring to is, there's a gentleman that's worked with the Michigan Municipal League. I believe he's worked in probably hundreds of communities. His name is Dr. Lou Bender. He's a motivational speaker that's worked with city councils, city governments and such, and team-building exercises where he'll actually visit, and he just got done visiting Gross Point City with their city administration and city council. I believe that's where Councilmember Hodges, that's one thing I certainly would like, you know, to look into down the road, I think, for city council here. I did this as an intern over in the city of Grand Ledge, and I found it to be extremely beneficial, and I think it would suit well for, you know, the city staff and city council.
That sounds like a real possibility. So, I appreciate you following up on that, Nick. Okay, other council comment? Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to thank and recognize Director Palloni for his five-and-a-half years of outstanding service. A lot of times when there's a jewel in your life, you take, take it for granted. We have really had a jewel as our Director of Public Safety. Just a fabulous five years, just great leadership, great mentorship, as professional as can be. His record speaks for itself, the low crime rate, the well-trained staff, community outreach. And in this particular time in era, it's interesting to note that the Department of Public Safety has not had one single excessive force complaint in the five-and-a-half years Steve Palloni has been director. In total, I would just say that, to me, maybe I'm a little prejudiced because of my law enforcement background, but it's not an overstatement to say he's one of the finest police chiefs in the state of Michigan.
Okay. Before we get this into a series of testimonies, two things I'd like to comment on in this, related to this topic, and I agree with everything you just said, Mayor Pro Tim Robson. First of all, there's a 90-day transition period, and Director of Public Safety Palloni is still our Director of Public Safety and will be through, past the end of the year. I forget the exact date that we're going to, that we.
About end of January.
So, he's with us till the end of January, and I don't want him to get too swelled ahead while he's still on our payroll, but I do intend to appropriately recognize him at this council, maybe a little closer to the end of his tenure, and I wanted to make sure that that was publicly known because I agree he's provided outstanding service to our community. And he's not going far, he just won't be in our service anymore. Our loss is going to be Gross Point Shore's gain and the role of city manager. So, thank you. Anybody else? Councilmember Rowland?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to reiterate what Councilman Robson said about Chief Palloni. Fantastic, just a gem of a human. Thank you for everything. We'll definitely get you, get to be able to kiss you on the cheek before you leave. I wanted to say, I wanted to say thank you to the staff at the park, Chad, Chris, Mr. Fraser, the entire park staff. That Halloween trick-or-treating this past weekend was so needed and so wonderfully set up and planned. They went off without a hitch, three shifts, 1:00, 2:00, 3:00. I think over 500 kids came through with the amount of adults. We probably had close to 1,000 people come through there, and I know everyone said thank you all the way through. All you saw was smiles. It was something to be applauded on, these guys to plan, this team, I should say, not just guys, to plan such a great event and set up the park in such a, such a great way. I wanted to really shout out to them. It's just a joy. The next thing I want to ask was, on the Sustainability Committee that Councilmember Lewitt chairs and Councilmember Hodges and I are on with City Manager Nick, I was wondering if we have the ability to take suggestions from our, from our residents on that. There's so many things out there that we can do, even little things that are simpler we're already doing. I know Councilmember Lewitt mentioned some things, but we're looking to start a webpage on the, on the city, city website, so that should, should lead to some more input from the residents. And just simple things that I wanted to suggest was simple, we get our packet each week, and it's color-printed. If we can change that, that's going to save some, some money as well. Money goes, money goes a long way here. That was the only thing I had, but I wanted to say thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else before we get to public comment on non-agenda items? Okay, we'll close out council comment, thank you, and move on to public comment, non-agenda items. Ask the administration if we have any public comment in queue.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no written public comment at this time, so I'll ask Leah if we have any public comment for the queue. Leah?
Thank you, City Manager Seisland. I do currently have one person in the queue for public comment, so I am going to pull up my screen. Okay, it looks like it's sharing. And then Lauren, you are first in the queue. What I'm going to do is ask you to unmute yourself, and then I need you to state your full name and city of residency for the record, please. Okay, if you would like to go ahead, please.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
I'm sorry, I'm having, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
We can hear you.
Hello?
Yes, can you hear, we can hear you.
Hi, my name's Lauren DeWicky. I'm at 917 Lake Point. Is that the information you asked for? I'm sorry.
I have a bad feeling that.
I think we have a bad connection, Mayor.
Link's connection is not so hot, maybe, maybe an internet problem.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, good. Okay, I'm sorry about that. I just walked into another room to get away from some noise. So, I just wanted to introduce myself as a candidate running for the Gross Point Public School Board, and I wanted to just kind of reach out to the community, the park especially, because that's where I'm from. So, and give just a little background about myself. I have four kids, they're 10, 9, 7, and 3, and we moved to the park two years ago to send our kids to the school and were disappointed when it took a turn and decided to close Trombley, which was our homeschool. And I started a group called Save Our Schools, which we work to fight the reconfiguration, and it didn't, didn't work. So, I decided to run for a seat on the board to have a say for the park. My plan is to reopen elementary schools. I would like to see the 5th grade back and add early childhood into the empty classrooms to support and include teachers and increase communication and transparency, clearly get the finances in order, and embrace community. I'd like to have safe and equitable schools for all students to thrive in our district. And to enact above, we must change our reactionary approach to be proactive. With that said, I just want to say that I want, would like to encourage everyone to vote November 3rd. We have about one week left. Thank you.
Thank you. Leah, do we have any more public comment?
Thank you, City Manager Seisland. Yes, I have one more person in the queue. Cheryl, you are next. If you can, please state your full name and city of residency for the record. Go ahead, please.
Sure, my name is Cheryl Denman, and I'm a Gross Point Park resident on Pemberton. And I'm speaking out now because bullying is a serious concern. Residents are also concerned about the hostility against the foundation and these so generous donors in our community. So, I have two questions. The first question is, I would like to ask Councilwoman Lewitt why she hates these donors, and I would like to ask Councilwoman Reed, what community provided the draft policy or where did she obtain the donor policy? Thank you.
Okay, there's no requirement that anyone actually respond to a question unless they, unless they wish to comment.
Sure, I'll answer that question. Am I on?
Yes.
I'm on.
I can hear you.
Yeah. Yeah, the draft gift donor policy was from the city of Birmingham. It's the same city that, where I found the ethics ordinance that we ended up modeling. It was a pretty comprehensive gift plan. I probably maybe more than we need, but I provided it to City Manager, and it gave him the things that I liked from it. It's available on their website for anyone to see.
And we were getting very close to being able to discuss that and vote on it at council, so I think that we're very close to that. Thank you.
Mayor General, I'll respond as well, which is just to say, I don't hate donors. I've heard that a couple of times. I'm not sure where that comes from, but I've also mentioned several times that I appreciate all that the donors have done. So, I can't, you know, people perceive certain things different ways, and that's fine.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Mayor Denner, I have no further public comment at this time.
Okay, and with that, I'll close public comment on non-agenda items, and I move that the meeting be adjourned. Is there support?
Support.
Support from Councilmember Reed. Call the roll, please, Clerk Playhut.
Councilmember Rayland?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Rapsin?
Can't hear you.
Rapsin?
Can't hear you, Jim.
Hodges?
Yes.
Fluid?
Yes.
And Mayor Denner?
Yes. Motion passed. The meeting is adjourned, and we can get on to more serious things as the Mayor Pro Tem has illustrated. Council, thank you very much for a very good discussion. And please stay safe if you and your children are participating in Halloween. An increase in cases in the park, and we all need to exercise to do care. So thank you. Meeting is adjourned, and we, almost by 10:30. So that seems to be our new standard. Thank you.
Happy Halloween.
Thanks, Halloween. Good night.
Bye, everybody.